Yes. Good evening. I'm calling this part of the meeting to order at 6:45. It looks like we don't have a quorum of the planning board, so we're just going to -- what we're going to do tonight is kind of get an introduction to this. There are folks here from Bay Spring, I know, and if they want to be heard, I know there are some other folks who want to be heard on these amendments. So we'll listen. We're not going to decide this tonight. We're going to have to continue this to our July 29 meeting. But we're going to start and kind of get an introduction of what will happen and what kind of feedback folks have for us. I know that we did get a letter about accessibility for these and whether that was sort of factored in. But could Phil or Larry or somebody sort of bring us up to speed on what this is about? Our chairman Larry Trim.
Hello. Good evening. Larry Trim to Fairway Drive, Chair of the Barrington Planning Board. We are here to talk about proposed amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, and they entail developer guidance for Allen's Cove. And then Phil is going to talk a little bit about how this process started and kind of lay the groundwork for our discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
This dates back to the various iterations of the Comprehensive Plan that called for a study of the Bay Spring area, the zoning of that area. That was first an idea in the 2010 Comprehensive Plan. It's also an idea in the 2015 Comprehensive Plan. Based on that action item in the Comprehensive Plan, we hired Horsley-Witten Group out of Providence to conduct a parcel study of the Bay Spring Ave and the corridor. And included in that study was the -- these two properties. One is on Allen's Cove with some frontage on Bay Spring and also a side street and also the property, we call it the abandoned, former abandoned mill property adjacent to the bike path north of Bay Spring. So that's the focus of this -- part of that study. And the study included online surveys, community meetings to get a lot of input, in particular drilling down on what are the communities' goals for the future use of these two sites. And the Comprehensive Plan lays out the future land use map, what is the town's intended future use, which sets the legal basis for rezoning properties. And so after all this public input, these public meetings and these surveys, Horsley-Witten drafted amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, which were essentially a new section in the appendix, which lays out criteria for future rezoning of both of these properties. And I can -- I'd like to walk through it. In each page I can -- if you have any questions, let me know. So the first amendment relates to just on page 18 of the housing -- of the housing and neighborhoods element, just these amendments. There are handouts in the back if people want to follow along. Basically, to describe this process I just briefly described, the process I just talked about with the study of the Bay Spring corridor. So it's just some background on page 18. Page 22 is a new action item, which is to establish new zoning at the Allen's Cove and former abandoned mill sites, as identified in the 2018 Bay Spring corridor zoning study, consistent with the appendix that I will walk through in a minute. The next proposed Comprehensive Plan amendment is on page 147, which also just reiterates that action item. That's in the land use element. The next amendment is the map, land use map six in the land use element.
I'm sorry. Could I -- so you said it was on?
This is the first map you see. It says future land use.
Yes. I'm looking at -- maybe I have an older version of the comp plan. It's adopted. Thank you.
To simplify, it's just the amended pages are included in this handout. The next item is just the future land use map. All the amendment there is related to identifying the two parcels in question as the future use would be cottage community. That's an important map. That's the basis for future zone changes, future land use map. The next is the map, land use map seven, and it identifies -- also identifies those two properties. That map shows that the proposed existing zoning is limited manufacturing, R-10 and business, and the future land use map is the cottage community zone as proposed. The implementation element has a few edits. 181. Page 181. That's just a description of the zoning land use map that's depicted, that I just described, the various zoning changes that would take place. And then there's an implementation action item. This is the implementation element. Page 151 adds the new action to establish the new zone on those two properties. So those are the various implementation action items that were included in relevant sections. Now, the meat of the amendments relate to creating a new appendix, Appendix 2A. If you can catch -- are you at Appendix 2A? It establishes developer guidance for Allen's Cove and the former abandoned mill sites. This is exactly the same approach we used to establish new criteria for the former Zion Bible campus, which led to the senior residential village zone. So I don't know if I want to go through every word, but it establishes applicability with these two properties. It describes findings, which is one is to help us get toward closer to the 10% affordable housing goal. Some of the purposes include increasing diversity of housing types in Barrington with the proposed cottage units as a goal, meeting the needs of households with a range of incomes, providing for a form of development that's more consistent with the character of the neighborhood, providing for compact, sustainable development, encouraging walkable and bikeable communities, incorporating low-income development principles, and also allowing, at least on the abandoned mill site, an opportunity for a mixed-use or commercial building where it's closest to the street. The criteria -- figure 2A-1 in the appendix is the Allen's Cove site. The property has limited developable acreage based on our study that Horsley-Witten did. It's estimating, it's not precise, but estimates the CRMC setback requirements, floodplain, based on the best available data, which is not based on like a formal survey showing the wetland edge and everything like that. So that's an approximation of the developable area. It's not perfect. So it shows one potential arrangement of cottages on the site with parking. It certainly could change, but the idea is to have cottages framing a common green area with porches and kind of a gathering area within the site. And most of this area would be a restoration area, which is, the site now is being capped, but that would be restored, and the guidance includes the goals for public access. The next page shows the north. The figure 2A-2 shows a conceptual site plan developed by Horsley-Witten that is reflective of the developer guidance that suggests a potential arrangement of cottages on the site toward the back part of the site. Bay Spring Avenue is toward the bottom. So right by the bike path, there would be a potential commercial or mixed-use building with parking behind it, and then cottages toward the back. One of the goals of this would be to establish a trail connection, develop trail connection from Bay Spring Avenue up into Haynes Park to the north. The guidance, continuing on this page, the guidance requires the minimum of 20% of the units to be affordable with a 99-year affordable deed restriction. They would have to comply with cottage-style design guidelines. It establishes an overall residential density of no more than 10 units per acre. So the Allen's Cove site, maybe it's 10 to 12 units based on our kind of initial evaluation of the site. That could go up, it could go down depending on actual verification in the field by professionals, engineers. It also establishes goals for streets and sidewalks, street scape, parking. It describes goals for actual what the buildings would look like, the cottages would look like, including requiring varying roof pitches and porches and items like that that would create a visual interest with the architecture.
Can I just ask one question? The density, overall residential density, shall not exceed 10 units per acre of developable land. That applies to both sites?
It applies to both sites, yeah. And then there's some site planning and other goals and some dimensional regulations that are laid out within the developer guidance. This was reviewed by the planning board at multiple meetings and was recommended to be brought to the council for a public hearing. So that's the summary. If any specific questions about it, I can try to answer them.
I have one specific question, and it might be that it's addressed in a definition section of the overall Comprehensive Plan, but I was just curious if when affordable housing is mentioned in Appendix 2A, if it should be capital A affordable, or if that's covered in the Comprehensive Plan, just to be clear on the definition of affordable housing. It appears in several places, and I didn't notice it capitalized anywhere.
I'm not sure with the --
So section 3B under 2A is, I think, the first place I saw it. Under purpose, meeting the housing needs of households with a range of income, including 80% market rate and 20% affordable. So if it's capital A, it's following the state definition of affordable housing as opposed to some other definition?
It's all affordable housing has to be based on the state definition to qualify. So the goal is to qualify it as affordable housing, so it would have to meet the state definition.
And it is defined later on.
Okay. All right.
It's in Appendix 2A, Section 5. Proposed development shall provide a minimum of 20% affordable units as defined in Rhode Island general laws, 4553.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Any questions?
So this is changing the time for the -- what was it before?
Here, the mic's not on.
Yeah, sorry. What was it before?
Currently, this site on Allen's Cove is zoned R-10 along the street frontage and in the interior part, which is mostly within the CRMC setback, that's zoned limited manufacturing. The property on the north side of Bay Spring Avenue is zoned business.
So it's taking commercial properties and turning it into residential?
It is taking properties that have not been developed as commercial for many years and turning them into --
But they're currently living as commercial?
They are limited manufacturing, which hardly, if you see the developable area versus the boundaries of that limited manufacturing district, there's hardly any room to do anything within the limited district, limited manufacturing district. Most of that would be R-10 along the street frontage, and then the entire property on the north side is business currently.
Okay.
Which then the guidance allows for a mixed-use development, a mixed-use building on Bay Spring Avenue, because some of the feedback from the process with Horsley-Witten was to, they would love to see some kind of like coffee shop there, like Borealis by the -- in East Providence, something like that.
Currently in Barrington, do we have commercial, like, do we have any properties kind of set as commercial properties, like big manufacturing, kind of like a business that was our -- that would have been seen as Barrington's industrial, like industrial park?
There's no industrial zone property. This is the last one, and it's barely anything. Because based on CRMC regulations, it's not much of, not much land left. I think the property, we might dispute how much exactly is developable, but based on our analysis, not a lot of land within that LM zone that could be developed.
Okay. Thank you.
So if this, if we were to approve this, there would be no more manufacturing zoned land?
Well, actually, we don't actually change the zoning map, but our goal would be to establish the groundwork to enable them to apply to rezone the property like they did with the Zion property. The zone just stays the same until someone comes forward with a proposal with a zone change and a proposal that meets the criteria.
Right. I guess I'm wondering if outside this, there is any other manufacturing?
That's it. Last one. It was, like, Atria used to be limited manufacturing. Barrington Cove Apartments, I believe, also was limited manufacturing, but then that got turned to elderly housing.
Right. Okay. Other questions?
You said the basis of these guidelines were what was done at the old Zion property. What are the differences between this, these guidelines and the guidelines established for that?
For Zion? Zion's significantly larger site, and that allowed, that Zion one, one of the central focal points of that was to preserve Belton Court. They couldn't do anything unless you preserve Belton Court, so that was one of the main objectives. Also allowed for up to three, almost 300 units of different types of senior housing.
Oh, but as far as aesthetics, spacing?
Aesthetics, very similar categories that we have here.
All right.
Having attended a number of the meetings, I think one of the differences was that neighbors were very much involved in this study.
Your mic's on.
Neighbors were very involved in this study, whereas Zion was less, there was less input from neighbors because of it being such a large site, I think. It's just an observation.
Okay. Anything else from the planning board? Okay.
Oh, they have.
Thank you. I wonder if we could hear, if you wouldn't mind giving us your impression, folks who actually lived there, of this process. I think, I mean, I've been to some of these outreach sessions and seen you there, so do you have anything to say about this?
Hi, I'm Mark Johnson. I live at 104 Bay Spring Avenue. I've been involved with the neighborhood for many years and throughout this process. I think I really appreciate what the town has done to go to the trouble of hiring consultants who were really useful in helping neighbors to think about what would be the best use of these properties in our neighborhood. I think the process was highly robust. We had, it started with a walk through the neighborhood with some of the consultants, which was followed by a meeting that day that was held at the community center, another meeting some months later that was held at the library. There was a lot of input from a lot of different people. Many of us in the neighborhood would like to see, would have liked to see the site remain how it was, which is essentially a beautifully forested piece of land that is adjacent to the top of the Narragansett Bay. You know, it's populated by wildlife and a large diversity of plants. It's a really nice site. We also understand that it's privately owned and that the owner has the right to develop the property. And so what this process allowed us to do was to think about, okay, given that it will likely be developed, what's the best use for the neighborhood? Of course, there are a diversity of opinions. Many of them were expressed. Like I said, the process was good, so the collection of many opinions was gathered by the consultants, and they were rated by what people wanted most. And the plan that you just heard about was the one that received the balance of favorable views. So there was a recognition on the neighborhood, the part of the neighbors, that the neighborhood really is a small residential, small property, small home residential community, and that we wanted this next development in the neighborhood to reflect that. So homes that are not large, that are not far from each other, but that are single units, which is what most of the rest of the neighborhood is. Another attractive feature of this was that it might attract a range of people of different ages, some people looking to retire into a smaller home, other people maybe who are just starting out, their family, and want a smaller home to begin, you know, their lives in Barrington. A couple of other attractive aspects of the proposal were the possibility of having some commercial, more commercial development in the neighborhood. You know, it's right on the bike path, there are lots of people coming by, and it does seem like there's an opportunity for a viable business there that would also enrich the neighborhood. It'd be great to have a coffee shop that we could walk to. And, yeah, and then the other, I think, attractive idea that's in the plan is that by developing these sites, it might make some of the natural features in the neighborhood more accessible. For example, it wasn't mentioned, but just behind the site on the north side of Bay Spring Avenue is the park. I'm blanking on the name right now. Haynes Park, yeah. So that I go through every day. But basically, this would provide a nice additional way to get into and access Haynes Park through this site. So as far as I'm concerned, it's a really good compromise. I think it probably is the best development plan for the neighborhood, given that the property will be developed. So, yeah, I want to thank the planning board for, and Phil, who sort of led us through this especially, and thank all of you for listening today.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Hello, my name is William Cost. I'm a director butler to the property. I've lived there all my life. I agree with previous speaker. Sorry, sir.
You can take it out if you want.
That's all right. I'll just raise it. I would love to see cottage, I think so. I would love to see cottage-style units placed there. I'm not really even in favor of having a commercial development in there because of the traffic that goes through there. It's basically a dead-end street, a little side street, very little traffic. At 7 o'clock at night, you know, there's no noise of any kind. The neighborhood is quiet. It's an old neighborhood, and that's what I like to see preserved, to have small people living there, small cottages, one type of family, you know, coming and going. I don't want to see constantly turning over, where you have people constantly coming and going, because that only involves a different element that we don't need in that neighborhood. As far as cheap homes where people move in and then they move out six months later, whatever, stuff like that. But a cottage form where the elderly can move in or someone willing to retire, as he said, that type of neighborhood. That's what I'm looking to see, not a commercial entity. The plan going forward would be great, and if it can be preserved to a point where it's not cleared out and new homes built on it, and then we have to wait another 40 years for the trees to grow again, that's what's happening right now. And as I look out my front window, all I see is dirt. All that forestry, it's all gone. And I've been looking at it for 60 years, and it was a shame to see that they had to tear it all down to do their project. So that's all I've basically got to say.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Phil? Phil? Could you just get the microphone? Thanks, Larry. Yes, sir.
My name is Dr. Frank Cummings. I'm a 14-man-a-road, and I've been a resident of Barrington for 50 years. I initially made a letter to the planning board, but I'd like to address the town council at the same time, because what it has to do with is to consider in the planning that we do and the approval of town properties, the needs of the disabled and what I call the frail elderly. There are a lot of older people, but people who are frail have difficulty with their gait. They are unsteady. They sometimes need to walk with help. And I think that as I've read through the amendments and the original survey that I took, I'm still concerned about the fact that we have not fully addressed that. I saw one comment about ADA compliant in the recent thing, and I think it's a very important thing, not only for people such as myself, but others as they mature in their life in Barrington and want to remain here. So I encourage, before any final approval is given to this or at the Zion, that these issues of accessibility to all people in the town be considered.
And are you asking if it could be in addition to ADA compliance, or is ADA compliance your goal for this?
Well, I think ADA compliance is important, but I think it needs to be spelled out in terms of the things. If you look at the plan, one of the examples given is a house with five steps in an area called nonconformity. There's another more easy house that has three low steps getting in, but there are no banister, there's no grab bar, which is inaccessible to someone such as who uses a scooter or a frail elder person without something to grab onto. Those are the issues that I'm really talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Phil? Could you address that?
I believe the pictures he's referring to were part of the analysis that Horsley-Witten did of nonconforming and conforming structures along the Bay Spring corridor. So all those houses have steps and are inaccessible, none of them ADA accessible. I was checking for some language within the text of the appendix, and I couldn't quite find requirements about ADA accessibility for the buildings. The pathways, sure, but not the, I don't know if the buildings are really spelled out. So we could, I believe the planning board will have another crack at it at the July meeting, so maybe we can talk about some language to include related ADA accessibility for structures for the residential units.
That'd be great. And so it may be that the structures that you were looking at were part of the survey of the existing houses around there and not, what Phil is saying, and not the proposed development. That is, they went through and they looked at things as they are, and there are some with steps and so forth. But it would be good, I think.
I think it's a small, it's an easy text amendment to this.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Sure. Sure.
Hi, I'm Jim Bessel, 31 Sunset Drive in Barrington. I'm also a member of the Barrington Cemetery Commission. Just to ask a couple of questions in regard to the Allen Cove development site along Adams Avenue. It does say in the proposal that there will be construction of a sidewalk along the east side of Adams Avenue, and that would impinge upon the cemetery property, the Allen Cemetery property right there. And we're not supposed to have construction within 25 feet of a historical cemetery, according to Rhode Island general law, unless the bounds of the cemetery are exactly defined. And we're not quite sure, being that it's a historical cemetery, that those boundaries are well-defined in terms of putting a sidewalk right on the edge of that boundary. So that's our concern from the Cemetery Commission, is we would have to do some sort of survey and research, perhaps some ground-penetrating radar, to confirm that there are no historical burials that we don't know about along that side of the road. And along the southern boundary, I think the proposed site also runs along the southern boundary of that cemetery property as well. So any development within 25 feet, we would have to basically have a concern that we're impinging upon potential cemetery burials, and that we would have to do some sort of mitigation to make sure that the bounds of the property are what we think they are.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's good to know. Is that something that you've sort of flagged for follow-up?
The guidance includes the option of not building the sidewalk along Adams Avenue, but building it, improving, using that, those resources that would have gone toward that sidewalk to improve sidewalks on Bay Spring. That's the, yeah, that would be probably, the preferred direction would be improving the sidewalks on Bay Spring.
Okay.
That's how the discussion kind of panned out.
But we should just sort of keep our eye on that as we're looking at.
The setback, yeah, the setback is interesting.
Not something that would have occurred to me, so thank you for bringing it up. Anyone else? Ms. Wyatt.
Sandro Wyatt, 28 Byway Road. I am going to look at this from the environmental end mainly, and I'd like you to consider what's been taken away. A forest of trees that consume nitrogen and emit oxygen, that provide a canopy for shrubs and plants, that helps cool the neighboring community. What's already been taken away is a vital portion of the wildlife corridor that runs from the East Coast Greenway to Allen's Cove. What's already been taken away is a hunting ground and refuge for animals, raccoons, hedgehog, woodchuck, skunk, fox, coyote, and deer. What's been taken away is an important migrating bird resting spot. And what's been taken away is a tranquil woods only a few feet from the budding property, from budding property owners who could watch the changing seasons and hear the birds and the lapping of the tide in Allen's Cove. What is left is a scorched six-acre lot that can never return to its natural condition. So I ask you to please consider the following. The owners, Bay Spring Realty Incorporated, have proposed on many public occasions and in writing, a 10,000-square, 100-bed assisted living building, a big box on contaminated land only 12 inches below, where the elderly, frail, and impaired would daily live and walk. The sounds emitting from and contingent to the lot would come not from birds and lapping water, but from emergency vehicles, delivery trucks, untold numbers of automobiles during the day and night, increased street lighting, automobile lights, lighting from around and on the building, and with no trees to hide, diffuse, or absorb the disturbances. The village plan is a compromise, but a good one. It adds to and complements the community of small multi-revised homes, I live in one of those. It minimizes lighting and traffic disturbances, and it leaves some undeveloped land to revert to some natural growth and wildlife accessibility. So I ask you to please consider what the alternative could be, the one I just read you, and vote to accept the comprehensive plan amendments for lots 154 and 109 in the Bay Spring Avenue corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Tim Lovridge, 30 Walsh Avenue, Barrington. I'm just, I mean, these, this whole process started with the, when we found, you know, that, when the owners applied to the DEM for the grant to clean up, you know, to provide funds to clean up the land, you know, even though apparently they knew it was dirty land for a decade or more before applying for the grant. Now, these guy, these are, from what I understand with this plan, it's just propose, it would be, let me see, developer guidance. And so I'm curious, you know, the developer, we saw his lawyer just last week, and one of the things he was very adamant about was the owners needed to maximize the value of the land. And, you know, that's where the nursing home comes in, because apparently for the DM grant, you need to provide, you need to show that you're doing, you're getting, I can't think of the word right now, but, you know, it becomes a commercial development, you're creating commercial development for the, to achieve, in a brownfield, to achieve that loan. I mean, the grant. But, you know, he's, they're focused on this maximum value for the land, and I'm just concerned that we make sure it's maximum value, not for them necessarily, but also maximum value for the town of Barrington. You know, and I think the compromise plan is great. I really appreciate they addressed the lighting and that. But I'm just curious, I mean, how much can we hold the owners of the land to this, what's called the guidance? You know, or is it something that they can override or fight, I mean, because it is their private land? So that's what I'm curious about.
That's a very good question. I think most of us think that the zoning rules that we put in place in Barrington control, and most of us think they should. And they do, unless there is a process by which they can go through a comprehensive permit. This property already, this plan already takes into account affordable housing. The comprehensive permit program is part of the Affordable Housing Act, it is a state law. That allows them to skip some of the normal steps, go to the planning board, and then if the planning board doesn't approve of whatever they've said, even if we've passed this and we've said this is the right kind of zoning and this is the right kind of development for it, they could appeal to the State Housing Appeals Board. We haven't had great success before them. They seem to ignore the fact that we've done a lot in town for affordable housing. You know, I don't know how they would feel about the fact that this proposal really includes substantial affordable housing. But I just have to say that I, we can't, we don't have absolute control over that. So if somebody wanted to come in and put in, I don't know, a two-story building, a big box, they wouldn't be able to under this proposal, but I can't tell you whether the State Housing Appeals Board would allow them to do that. I could tell you that, I think, I only speak for myself, I think we'd probably fight that pretty hard, as we've fought in the past. And hopefully, the fact that we are taking into account affordable housing would make a difference. So unsatisfactory answer, I'm sorry, but that's, that's the way it is. I think I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn and continue this. Do we need to continue it?
Yes, you're not going to adjourn, but I would recommend a motion to continue this public hearing to the meeting of Monday, July 29th at 7:00 PM. And then I'm going to ask the planning board to convene and just continue their hearing to a different date. Why don't you, while you're here with the council, why don't you do that?
Okay. Do I hear that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One recusal?
So just for the record, the hearing will be continued on the next meeting of the town council, which is Monday, July 29th, as far as the council. Since we have, we have members of the planning board here, we don't have a quorum, so you can't quote "hear" it legally. But there is one thing that you can do without a quorum, and that's continue something. So I'm going to ask, Larry, if you could convene the planning board and then entertain a motion to continue the public hearing of the planning board to the meeting of Tuesday, July 2nd. That way you won't have to re-advertise it. If anybody here wants to know about it, Tuesday, July 2nd would be the planning board public hearing, and that would allow also the owner of the property, if he wants to appear at that time, he'll have plenty of time to do so.
Okay. Just a quick clarification question. If we don't have a quorum, we can still make a motion?
You can still, yes. I'm going to ask you to call the planning board to order.
Hereby call the planning board to order.
Okay. And then you're going to open the public hearing for the comprehensive plan.
Okay, hereby open the public hearing for comprehensive plan.
And then entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to Tuesday, July 2nd at 7:00 PM.
Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion to continue the hearing to...
Tuesday, July 2nd.
Tuesday, July 2nd.
At 7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM.
And a second?
All in favor?
Aye. Okay. And then a motion to adjourn the planning board.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. So we're already in session, but I am going to take a short recess so we can get folks in here.
Can I just have a quick, can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
So we just, sorry, Mark Johnson, 104 Bay Spring, we just continued the public hearing on the part of the planning board and of the town council. I was under the impression that we were, I was going to be witnessing a vote tonight from the town council. When is it that we could anticipate a vote on this appendix?
There'll be two votes.
Yeah, I think the idea was to combine it into one particular hearing, but that didn't work because the planning board didn't have a quorum. So I think it would probably be a vote of the planning board on July 2nd, probably, and probably a vote of this council on July 29th.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. We're in recess. We have already called to order our town council meeting, but I would ask that you all rise for the pledge and please remain standing after the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If you could remain standing, I just, I think it's appropriate for us to pause for a moment of silence for the victims at Virginia Beach. There have been too many of these tragedies, and this one hits close to home as we stand in a municipal building. So I'd ask that you keep the victims, their families, their friends, and their colleagues in your prayers, and if we could just take a moment of silence. This evening, we have the happy duty of swearing in some new, newly-promoted officers, police officers in our Barrington Police Department. We've had a lot of these, we've had some good promotions through the ranks as our folks are moving up in the ranks, which is always a good thing, we'd like to see that. It gives everybody a sort of path forward. So I would ask if Chief D. Crescenzo could come forward, please. We'll be swearing in Sergeant Ben Ferreira, Sergeant Tim Oster, Detective John Skaglyatich, I never could pronounce his name, and Detective Josh Mello.
Thank you, counsel. Tonight, we're going to first swear in two detectives, current detectives, to the rank of sergeant. First, we'll have Detective Benjamin Ferreira come forward. Ben Ferreira was hired in August of 2002. He received his undergrad degree from UMass Dartmouth. He received his graduate degree in management from Salve Regina University. And from UMass Law, he received his Juris Doctor, his law degree. And he has been in a detective unit for the last about nine years in the department, handled a lot of cases from misdemeanors to felonies. And our second detective tonight will be promoted to the rank of sergeant is Detective Detective Osa received his undergrad degree from Roger Williams University, his master's degree from Salve Regina University. He was hired in 2004, has been about 15 years on the department. He went to the BCI school, as well as, both these officers went to the, what we call the Bureau of Criminal Identification School at the Crime Lab in Rhode Island at URI. It's a 26-week intensive course school. And with that and their backgrounds and their education, I'm going to formally swear them in, and if we could raise our right hands. Do you swear that you shall be true and faithful unto the state and support the laws and constitution of the United States, and that you shall well and truly execute to the office of sergeant in the police department at the town of Barrington for the period of your term of service? You further agree to obey and be bound by such rules and regulations prescribed by ordinance passed by the town council of the town of Barrington? So help you God. Congrats. We'll hold off one minute. We're going to have their wives come up in what we call a pinning of the badge, the new badge, to their new rank of sergeant, and we'll have Ben Ferreira's wife come up, And we'll have Jennifer Osa, Tim's wife, pin him with his new badge. Congratulations.
We'd known you were going to have little children here, we could have done the zoning discussion later, put them right to sleep. We must have waited long for it.
That's for sure. I'd like to have Patrolman John Skaglyatis come forward. He's going to be promoted this evening to the rank of detective. Patrolman John Skaglyatis was hired 2007. He's got 11 and a half years of service. He was originally from Coventry, Rhode Island, has his undergrad degree from Salve Regina University in administration of justice. Last year, he's been in our accreditation, as the accreditation manager for the department over the last year, which is a very significant job. He also has attended the BCI school, 26-week. He also has, uh, attended the BCI school, 26-week, uh, crime investigation school at the Rhode Island Crime Lab in conjunction with URI. And I'll have Patrolman Josh Mello come forward, please. He will be promoted tonight as well to the rank of detective. Josh Mello was hired, he writes very small, he was hired in 2009, has 10 years of service. He spent the last several years as our first and only SRO in the high school, and he also rotates throughout the other schools. He has a bachelor's from Roger Williams University, a master's in business administration from Salve Regina, and he is currently entering his last year of law school, and he'll be completing his Juris Doctorate also in May of 2020. And with that, we're ready to swear in our new detectives. If we could raise our right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you shall be true and faithful unto the state and support the laws and constitution of the United States, and that you shall well and truly execute to the office of detective in the police department of the town of Barrington for the period of your term of service? You further agree to obey and be bound by such rules and regulations prescribed by ordinance passed by the town council of the town of Barrington? So help you God. And we will have our officers pinned with their new badge, and John Skaglyatis, his wife, Sunny, will come forward to pin her husband. And could we have Jennifer Mello, Josh Mello's wife, come forward to pin our SRO now detective?
Next item on our agenda is announcements, and I would ask our town manager, Jim Cunha, to take us through those, please.
Was it something I said? Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President. First of all, and I'm sure Mr. Klepper will go into greater detail with an explanation, but I want to make sure everyone's aware that the water ban has been lifted, so you are now allowed to water your gardens and lawns and wash your vehicles. The last day of school will be on Friday, June 21st, for students, and for teachers will be Monday, June 24th. And as I'm sure everyone is aware, 4th of July, the town offices and DPW will be closed. And starting on Sunday, July 7th, and going through mid-August, we will begin our concert series. The first five concerts this year will be at Latham Park, and then the following two will be at Barrington Beach. And our next council meeting will be on July 29th, and that will be held in the library auditorium because it's air-conditioned. That's all I have.
Thank you. The next group of items on our agenda are part of the consent agenda. These items are considered routine by the town council and are typically enacted by one motion. There won't be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda. We will vote on the remaining items, and then that item will be considered in its normal sequence. Is there anything that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Anyone from the council? Yes.
I'd like to remove resignations, reappointments, the town planners' report, and correspondence. Please.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to remove the police report, also town planner and correspondence.
So the police, police chief's report. Anything else? Anyone from, okay, so, seeing none, with the exception of item 5, item 6, and in item 8, the police chief's report and the town planner's report, and item 11, with the exception of those, do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. First one is resignations, and Vice President Weymouth.
Barbara Green has been, uh, the chair of the Senior Services Advisory Board for a couple of years now, and, um, I, I worked, I, I think I first met her way back when at probably the middle school PTO. She has devoted her time and energy to this town, um, for many, many years, and I just wanted to recognize her and to accept her resignation with regret.
Thank you. With that, we, uh, I will take that as a motion to accept her resignation with regret. Is there a second? Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one is reappointments.
Uh, we need to pull the Hayden Zimmerman, um, reappointment and amend the date, his expiration date to May 31st, 2020. Is that correct?
Okay. Any other changes to that portion? Okay. With that, do I have a motion to accept the reappointments to boards and commissions as amended?
So moved.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, no opposition, the motion carries. Next item is the police chief's report.
Um, so I, I wanted to, um, pull it for two reasons. One was, I had noticed it was the, um, seems to be the second month in a row that an officer, the same officer, Mailhot, um, seized a loaded gun during a traffic stop, and I, I wanted to commend him for that, but also ask if that's, um, seems like a lot more than I'd expect, twice, um, in a row, and I'm just curious if, if it's related to a rise in anything else, or just coincidental.
I'll let the chief disagree with me, but, uh, it is, it is unusual to have that. I think in my time here, in three years, this is the first time, and I'd also like to point out Officer Mailhot is one of our newest officers, and so obviously, his training has worked very well, and he's taken two weapons off the street.
Yeah. And, um, the other, and, um, it's, it's not in the report, but I was just curious with, um, now Detective Mello's promotion, if the SRO position is being filled by a, a single person?
That decision has not been made yet, but it will be made prior to the school year. There'll be some training involved, so there may be a slight lapse, or not lapse, but there won't be as significant a presence at the school at the beginning of the school year, but there will be a presence there most of the time.
Okay. Anything else for the police chief's report? Okay.
Weymouth?
Yes, for the town planner, Vice President Weymouth, and then Counselor Ryer.
Uh, on the planning board report, it, um, it, there were a number of items that the planning board, um, on the, the last planning board agenda that we were apprised of, and the first one being the approval of Shine Harmony's request for a one-year extension of the approval of the master plan for a senior residential community at the former Zion campus. Um, the master plan approval was set to expire on July 21st. There has been some confusion, I think, about whether that included the tax stabilization agreement as well, and I just wanted to let everyone know that that, the tax stabilization, um, uh, plan expired, um, I think this past January, or possibly even the January before this.
Yes, um, that, that is correct. The tax stabilization plan expired. This was solely with the, um, major land development project part of the, um, approval. So any, either they come back, or any new entity coming back, would have to negotiate a new tax stabilization agreement with the town council at that time.
But they could follow the master plan.
They could follow the master plan, yes.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. Phil, are you?
Preliminary plan.
A preliminary plan, I'm sorry, that's right, there were already a preliminary plan, so... Okay. Anything else? Counselor Ryer.
Um, I had a question about the complete streets. I was just wondering about a, a timeline, um, for that initiative to move forward.
There's still internal discussions about the make, the exact wording of that policy, and so it's not too overbearing for the administration, I think that's a concern, but, um, so I think we'll know more later this week, once we kind of talk about it some more internally.
And then the, um, the other part I was just curious about is whether or not all the roadwork that's going to happen this summer involves any sidewalks or not?
I don't know. That would be Allen.
Really, the only sidewalk that's part of that roadwork program is the paving from, I'm trying to remember, Cherry Lane, right next to the high school. Um, there's a cul-de-sac that, across the street by the tennis courts, and there's this disabled child that lives there wheelchair, and he will be going to the high school starting a year from September, and so part of the contract is going to put an asphalt, asphalt over that pathway between the end of the street and the high school to allow him to use his wheelchair to get directly to school. The other is the safe, you know, sidewalks, perhaps on primrose, but that's DOT, and so we're not sure what the time schedule is on that.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, do I hear a motion to accept the monthly department reports as presented?
So moved.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The next one is...
President, could I, I neglected two announcements, if I could just have a moment.
Sure.
First is the blood drive on June 11th from 3:30 to 6:30 at the library. Um, we're encouraging everyone to participate in that. And secondly, I'd like to introduce our new building official. As you know, Bob Speaker retired on Friday, and our new building official is here this evening, Dennis Beegan. Dennis, could you stand, please? Dennis comes to us where he was a, a building official in North Attleboro, Massachusetts.
So the, the next item that was pulled from that was correspondence, and I can't recall was that, that was you, Vice President Weymouth?
I think...
Oh, it was both of us.
Um, I'd like to, uh, bring to your attention, uh, the letter by Mr. Paul O'Brien, um, that refers to, or questions, uh, a recent, um, elected member to the COA, um, who not only did not reveal that her husband is a vice principal of a school in Barrington, um, but also has not, as far as anybody knows, has not sought an ethics, um...
Advisory.
Advisory opinion, um, because she, on the COA, she will be dealing with the school budget, and I would like to ask the solicitor, um, how we should proceed with that.
I, I don't think there's an ethical question under the Rhode Island ethics law there, because the COA, just like the town council, just like the financial town meeting itself, can only impact the bottom line of the school department and the school committee. They cannot control any individual policies or spending. So since they have no way of controlling or influencing the salary of the vice principal, um, the Rhode Island Ethics Commission, I do not think would find that any kind of conflict of interest. So that's, that's my take on it.
And I think there are, um, some, there have been decisions in the past with members of school committees and, uh, folks who are spouses, who are teachers or principals, that have passed muster before the, um, before the Ethics Commission.
Well, I just know that there was a big harangue, um, when, uh...
Scott Douglas.
Scott Douglas was elected, and, um, his wife serves on the school committee, and he did seek an ethics, uh, ruling, and I just think it would...
Right, but I, I think it's a little different with the school committee, where their, their policy board, and they're setting it, and they're, they're in a way pleading their case before the COA, as opposed to an employee who is just one of many employees of the school department. Um, and I think actually, even in Douglas's case, they did allow certain things to happen, that the, the Ethics Commission has realized that in a small state where the Rhode Island, we have oftentimes family members on different boards. Um, I, I've yet to hear actually of a married couple on the same board or committee, but there are conflicts where similar situations, where there've been someone on the same, um, there's been, where there's a town council member and a spouse on the, the budget committee, which is the equivalent of an appropriations committee in that town, so there have been things like that. And the Ethics Commission rules on that, but they've ruled narrowly that they have to recuse from very specific participation, but not in general.
I, um, I actually had the, the same concern. I had called the Ethics Commission, and, and they told me, um, that it wasn't, it wasn't a conflict due to a class exception. I had also wanted to pull the correspondence, um, from Dr. Jacobs, um, and I, I assume, and just wanted to make sure that that was also sent to the, um, the fire department and police department.
Yes, it was. You're talking, yes, the, on the rescue call.
Yeah, the compliments on the, the job that the EMTs do.
The fire chief actually told me today that, um, just to give you a little bit more detail, this was a neighbor that responded, who was the emergency room physician at Rhode Island, at Hasbro, and, um, as they were working, she had some suggestions, and they called it in to the medical authority, and they gave permission for her to take the, over the care of the patient with the rescues assistance, and she rode the rescue in with them, and, um, the last we knew, the man was critically, is still in critical condition, but is surviving because of the work of our tremendous fire department.
I just want to comment on that. Chief, I think this is the third time probably in the last 12 months that either in the newspaper or something sent to us, I've seen, uh, your team saved someone's life, and I'm sure it happens more often than that, but, uh, they all deserve to be commended for this, it's really something, so...
Thank you for your comments, so I just want to let you know, I get cards almost every week, and they're on the bulletin boards to keep the morale, you know, to show they are making a difference. I, I saw this one, and it struck me, I said, this, this is really big, I mean, this is one of our peers. It's, it's like our accreditation, that we're doing it right, so, uh, I was very happy to see it later. Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to know that we actually, all of our firefighters are, um, trained EMTs, so, um, that's good to know, that we, uh, we've got people who can save lives throughout the department, including the chief is an EMT. Anything else from the correspondence?
With, with that, I move to accept correspondence.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Uh, this is an agenda item for members of the public who want to speak on, on a topic that is not already on the agenda. If you do want to speak on this, please indicate you'd like to speak by raising your hand. When you're recognized, please approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Please, come forward. for the record. Please, come forward.
Hello, town council. My name is Christina Machado. I live at Barrington Cove on Bay Spring Avenue. And because Barrington, I know, has done a study on the elderly in Barrington, how we feel, what we're thinking, I'm here to add a little addendum to that. Starting April 18th and continuing on for over a month, four incidents of damage to our vehicles at Barrington Cove have occurred. There are 60 units at Barrington Cove. There are 45 tenant cars. All but three cars have been keyed seriously, and it's beyond what a key can do—the damage, the gross scribbling on our cars. So I figure this loss is approaching to us $200,000. How did I figure that? Take 42 cars, multiply it by a $4,000 cost of damage, I think I came up with $168,000. Some cars, like mine, have been damaged twice, because the perpetrator has been here to us four times. Some cars have been damaged three times. I saw an appraiser for one woman's car tell her that the book value is—you know, the damage is beyond the book value. She cried. I'm crying. The damage to my car, twice—two incidences of damage to my car total $8,650.50. We're a low-income sort of place, as I'm sure you know. This is not good for us. This is—I know the police chief has—I've spoken to him. I'm not here to complain about the police. But it keeps happening, and of course, they've increased patrols. Of course, they want to catch who's ever doing this. But it keeps happening. I go out every morning to walk around my car and see what's new. I'm not the only one who does that. First time around, I foolishly got—had my car fixed. Big mistake, because it happened again. So now I have a second claim, a second deductible, a second car to rent. Our rents are rocketing up because Bristol County is doing well, the economy. Our rents—HUD has something to do with our rents, and when the economy improves in Bristol County, HUD tells our landlord that our rents can go up. My rent went up $65, $64 last year. This year, it's going up $35. So even our maintenance man's car got in this mess. So we're approaching like $200,000 of damage here. I've ginned up the figures, with cars being hit repeatedly and three times around. This is bad. This is bad. We're all upset. People are saying they're going to move. I would love to stay where I am. I can't take another move. I'm disabled. And my brother—I'm rambling. My brother is developmentally disabled, as they call it these days, mentally retarded. He's at the Puritan group home. I moved here to be close to my brother, because he wants family contact, and I'm the family contact. So I don't know what you can do about it. The police are working and there, but it keeps happening. I would love to get my car re-fixed again, but when does it stop? Until someone is caught, I have no insurance that this is stopped, that this is over. And I'm not the only one who feels like that. So I don't know what I'm asking for. I don't know what I'm saying. Well, I know what I'm saying. I don't know what I expect you all to do, but we need help. This is heinous. This is bad. Out of 45 tenant cars, all but three are attacked, and this is an attack. If you could see the gross—and this is not a key, just lightly scratching, this is some down into the metal. And my 16-year-old Subaru died in December, so I replaced it with a Kia Soul, a new car. Mistake. Car didn't even have it 800 miles before the first time it was damaged, and it didn't have about $1,000 the second time around. So I don't know what I'm asking. I'm just trying to shine a light on something which, to me, I think is really bad. It's really depressing. It makes me want to move. But when you're elderly, you need an elevator at the minimum. You face years-long waiting lists, or I have, at Developments for the Elderly. I've been on them, the waiting lists. So you can't just go, "I don't like it here anymore. I'm out the door."
Could I ask your name? I'm sorry.
Christina Machado. Didn't I say it? I'm sorry.
You did, and I—I just wanted to make—
Christina Machado. Also, I wish the police chief were here, because we have been notified that next week, sometime—the date will be firmed up—that our parking lot is going to get resealed and the stripes repainted on it, and so we have to vacate. We have to get our cars out of there, which I can understand. But that's 45 cars, and if you don't have local friends and family— I don't know what I'm going to do, so I was going to—so, management has suggested we park out on Bay Spring Avenue. We have to be out of there.
Ms. Machado?
Yes?
I think what—because this is open—
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. The Open Meetings Act limits us as to what we can do when someone comes in. It just means that we have to give notice of everything that we're going to talk about and—and do, so we're not really able to—to sort of vote on these kinds of things that people bring up. But I can tell you that I'm going to look into this a little further and see if—if there's anything that we can do.
Yeah, thank you.
And we will—maybe there are things that your landlord can do, your landlord could be encouraged to do—
Please do.
Simple things like more lights or even security cameras.
Cameras, yeah.
They're not that expensive.
They have put in security cameras. They're temporary security cameras that have SD cards and batteries, which the SD cards have already run out. So this is what we've got.
There are better ones that—
I know. It's not going to be done. I've had the—the definitive word from management that this is it, and no deterrent signage, so.
Well, we can—any one of us could give a call to—to the—
Thank you. I—I'm—thank you for anything.
For this to the manager, yeah.
Yeah, I—I will—I will contact the—the owner of the property directly. We spoke in my office—
Yes, you did.
The chief of police and I have spoken. There's an active investigation ongoing. There's increased surveillance. The chief has put in one of our surveillance cameras as well. It is probably someone coming off the bike path, quite frankly.
The cameras have come in. It's happened twice, and the cameras have shown nothing.
Our camera is now in place, and so—and they're monitoring that. So we—you know, hopefully, we'll be able to—to catch these with the investigation going on. Chief, I don't know—you weren't here for the discussion. Anything else you'd like to add?
It's me again. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Machado.
Yeah, I met with Christina in an apartment just on Friday, I believe. Tuesday, and then the Friday before that, I spoke to her over an hour on the phone. But we've had—I don't want to get into exact specifics, but we've done quite a bit, as much as we could. And I—and I understand their frustration over there, whereas upset as anyone else, you know, the—the police department is. In addition to the cameras, we've had officers actually sit there for six to eight hours. We have some idea on the timing of when it—when it's occurring, but there is no—there's at least—I checked all the reports. Lieutenant Burrell gave me a report on what they've done, and there's at least five different nights out of the seven, so we can't even pinpoint a night that it's happening. It's—it's random. And unfortunately, the random acts are the toughest to—to prove. We have some ideas on some younger teens that may be involved. We spoke to them, and we keep an eye on that, but other than that, I don't want to get into too much specifics. And I know that Christina had a lot to say about, you know, management. Then we have—Lieutenant Burrell has met—I believe her name is Becky—
Betsy.
Betsy—at the Cove. She's the manager there, and she's there on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and he's met with her at least on two or three different occasions and discussed different things that they could do. And we've tried that. We even talked about maybe putting in some better cameras for them, but they don't have a Wi-Fi system for the building that we could use, and we would need that if we went that route.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Would anyone else like to be heard for a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to interviews and appointments. Is—
Somebody for public comment?
Oh, sorry. I apologize. Please, come forward.
Short people problems. Hi, I'm Christina Watkins. I'm over at 246 Rumstick. And I'm just—I wanted to just bring up the structure of the financial town meeting. So in November, which was only six months ago, over 8,000 of the 15,000 registered Barrington voters casted their vote. At this last week's town meeting, there were maybe 700 people. And that discrepancy in numbers of voters should give us pause, to think maybe the format that we use right now is not the most democratic process that we could use. You know, our town started as a little agrarian town, and a quorum of 100 was maybe—it was maybe okay at that time, but we're now 15,000 people or more. And with the busy schedules we all follow on a day-to-day basis, it's just not feasible for people to come one night of the year to fit in a small high school auditorium and for everyone to have their say. So, you know, if we look at the numbers, 700 votes, that's only 0.006% of registered voters. Not really representative. So, you know, it's hard. We're all busy, like I said. I have a young family. I was there till 10 o'clock at night with my three kids. I have—it was lucky I was there a night that I didn't work, because I work odd hours, and I work 24 hours at the hospital and other weird things. And I have friends that are service members. They're not there. They don't get a say. So I'm not sure what the best solution is, but I think that is a good thing that we discuss. I think there should be an absentee kind of format to let people who are not available to cast a vote, whether it's—you know, whatever their reason may be. I think, you know, if we put out the budget ahead of time for people to look at and to think about, we can give them the option to—to cast some kind of absentee vote. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We can't—we can't formally do anything, but if we did want to discuss a topic that's brought up, to what extent can we and—
We can vote to amend the agenda, to add that topic to the agenda for discussion only. We can't act.
I—I move that we add that topic to the agenda for discussion only.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. So—
I—sorry. I've heard—heard from several people about the—the format of the financial town meeting and wanting to find a way to make it more accessible, more democratic. And I have a couple ideas, and I was wondering what would be the process to start pursuing those?
Can I jump in here?
Sure.
Last year, after the FTM, we had—we also received complaints, and we held a workshop in the chambers, and I think there were four people that showed up.
Well, you don't count, though. You guys—you guys come to everything. Four people other than you.
You know, I would say— It was not well-attended at all, and—
But we've—we have gone beyond even just workshops. I mean, that was a specially-attended, a specially-scheduled workshop, just to discuss that.
And the solicitor brought us various—
We asked the solicitor to look into it. We had the clerk look—look into this, to look at how other towns do it. Including Tiverton, which has a very unusual way of doing it, different than any other, which allows for absentee voting, but—which could end up having to have multiple—multiple voting days if—if it doesn't pass. So one of the—one of the issues that's been raised to me for years has been, you know, what if somebody can't make it? Can we have absentee voting? The answer is, you can't under this—this system, because a motion could be made at any point during that meeting to change it in some way or other. For the school committee, it's a bottom-line budget, but anyone at the meeting has the ability to raise a vote to the raise or lower by $50,000. While there was a vote filed before, which could have put on a ballot, but anyone could make a motion. There was a motion made to lower the—the town council's budget by $3,000. That—you can't anticipate those things, so you can't put those on a ballot. We don't know. In fact, our director of finance has to wait until the very last minute. She leaves blanks on the page to add up, because anyone could bring in $5,000 for the fire department, $5,000 from the police department. It could happen. So we have to—under the current system, absentee ballots wouldn't work. We looked into alternatives, one of them being just having, as—as Warren and Bristol have done, having the town council act as the finance department. They—they vote with the idea that anyone who wanted to could file a motion, and I think this is a very low number in—in Bristol of Warren, if—if 30 people—might be 30 people.
I think it was 200, as I remember—for the recall.
It was—it—well, in any case, let's say it's 200 people, sign a petition, you could hold a financial town meeting. But in the absence of that, it would just be the—the town council that votes on it, after a number of public hearings like the FTM, and after getting input from the COA. So there's that alternative. There's a current alternative, and then there's a Tiverton alternative, which calls for a hearing and then a referendum where you go and you vote. You know, it's—it's—people are attached to this, sort of agnostic about my—about it myself. I—I feel like we could make that decision, and then people could decide whether to reelect us if they didn't like that. But people are—are attached to our FTM. They like the idea of coming to that. If you're going to have an FTM, it makes it very hard to—to do things like absentee. If somebody's going to be able to do voting, you just can't have absentee. It just has to be who shows up. So—
I—I understand their challenges to changing it, but I think I—I have an idea that keeps the FTM, but also allows for a longer period of voting, including absentee voting, in advance of the FTM. Tried to share the idea—
Sure.
Now, so separate the budget hearing and the FTM by a longer period of time, maybe four weeks. And following the budget hearing, there's a one-week period when anybody can sit—submit a motion above 10,000— submit a motion above $10,000. And then for a period of one week before the FTM, it would, it would need to be, one week, the week before the FTM, with the FTM still on the Wednesday, Town Hall would be able to accept votes, and so people would be voting on all of those motions, and all of the referendums, the land acquisition, and things of that nature. So all of the large pieces would be voted on by potentially thousands of voters, any of the large changes. And then at the night of the FTM, it works the same, maybe with keeping it at $10,000 or below, any motion that night. And so, we still have the format of the FTM when everybody comes together and votes on the final budget, but there are going to be no huge swings to any given line item, because that would have all been handled in advance by a much larger voting public.
I just, my, my first thing is that when you talk about 1,000 people voting involving Town Hall, that's, I think a lot of the ideas that came forward, you know, were reasonable ideas, but they're expensive. It's expensive to, and time-consuming, to have a, you know, a skeletal crew in, in Town Hall, dealing with 1,000 or more, hopefully a lot more. Yeah, well, that's called an election, and, or a referendum.
Mary, what is the cost for a typical election? Let's see.
For a typical FTM election?
No, a special, call it a, call it a special election, yeah.
About 15,000?
But this, that's, is a lot of that cost people at polls, the cost to pay the people working at the five different polling stations? So this would be...
Who's going to be doing that work?
I don't think anybody would be doing that work. It would, it would be people coming to Town Hall. So we'd probably need an additional person working just that week, who would be checking voters, checking the voting database, and accepting paper ballots.
When was the last time that we, Charter Review Commission, put together? Because I know that this has been... Comes up every time. Comes up on the Charter Review Commission, and I think they do a good thorough job of figuring out, of figuring out kind of the lay of the land, they are open for public comment. And when is our next Charter Review?
Well, you're required to have it every 10 years, with an election of a commission and whatnot, but you, as a council, you can do it sooner. You could appoint a committee at any time to review it and make recommendations.
And when was our last one?
About, I don't know, I think it's more like three?
Four or five, my first year in town, so five years ago.
Five years ago, okay. It was like 47 questions?
Yes.
Forty-three questions on the, on the ballot.
And there were about 26 members on the, the committee, which was crazy. Robust.
Let me suggest that we...
Shot down any change to the...
Let me suggest that if we want to talk about this, we, we schedule it. We've done this in the past, and we certainly can. There seems to be renewed interest in it. I'm certainly willing to hold a workshop. We'll see if we get more than six or eight people. We know we can count on certain people showing up, but not...
At least one more.
And we can talk about these things, but we do have other things on this agenda that I'd like to get through. So, why don't we see if Mary can kind of send around and see what's a good date for, for everyone to look at this? And we'll try and prepare with examples like Tiverton, go back to what we, we had, got some materials collected on that. And any new ideas can sort of be handed around in advance, so that we'll have some, something to talk about. I think there is a discussion being had, and I think it's about the Tiverton model, and we certainly can hear from them. I know that Tiverton President has, I've talked to him, he, he feels very strongly it's a very good model. I don't, I don't think it really fits for us, but we'll, we'll have that chance to, to talk about it.
What's that discussion?
To...
You said there's a discussion being had about the Tiverton model?
I think some, the town Republicans are, are meeting to hold something about that. I saw something on Facebook. But, we can help, we can hold that discussion at a, at a meeting sometime in July. We'll, we'll try and see if we can get that together.
Sure, and if we're worried about attendance, I don't know if a workshop in July is...
Yeah, you know, actually, we've got plenty of time, so we could do it later and get time to, to gather that together.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, I'll, perhaps I should be the one from the solicitor's office when you do this, because I, I do have the unique perspective of being solicitor in Tiverton, back when they had the Financial Town Meeting, and when they made the change in their first few years of their referendum process. So, as well as our general 30 years of experience with different town things, so we'll be here as well.
Okay.
And if I could just say that during that workshop, I think Ursula Tyson-Rich gave us information about different towns, so I will go back and look for that information and send it to you.
Thank you.
And if we, we'll put it on the website well in advance of any, any meeting that we have. Maybe we'll hold it as part of our regular meeting, but we'll, we'll give plenty of advance notice, so folks can, can come and be heard on this. Would anyone else like to be heard on public comment?
Thank you, just quickly, Pam Laurie, 56 Martin Avenue. Just a quick comment about when Officer Mello was replaced as the SRO for the district. There is, whether it's a rumor or not, the question came up tonight as well, if that will still be one SRO versus a job that is split by two or three officers. You know, one of the big benefits, and I've had two kids at the high school with Officer Mello, one of the big benefits that was touted and has come to fruition is that relationship that Officer Mello has with the students, and so I highly encourage the chief to continue with one officer, one possible, because I think it would be very difficult for that type of on-the-ground relationship with the students, if that was a job that was split between multiple officers. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so now we'll move on to interviews, and Mr. Stafford. Is Mr. Stafford here? I think we may have lost him at some point during the evening. Next item on our agenda is the Bristol County Water Authority Monthly Report. Chairman Klepper is here and waiting patiently. Thank you.
Good evening. Any questions on the report that I've submitted?
Do you want to just say publicly what, what's going on with the leak? So, I mean, we've got it in your report, but it might be good to...
We've determined, through the use of a drogue-pulled camera, that is, like a parachute, the water's moving forward, it pulls the camera forward. We found the leak about 1,840 feet from the west end of the pipe. It's about 180 feet down below the surface. It's inside of a 24-inch pipe. We don't have anyone small enough to go down there and weld the opening. We have a camera that showed us there was a break in the weld. The pipe is solid, it's a 5/8-inch steel pipe. We postulated that it was at a seam, and that's in fact what it turned out to be. Someone has said, "Well, can we go further and see if there are other leaks?" Doesn't make any difference. Once you have one leak, we have to seal the whole pipe. It's called slip lining. That is, we put another pipe inside of that pipe. There's a new technology. Typically, you put in a pipe, like a PVC pipe. It's a thick pipe, it's welded together typically in 40-foot or 50-foot sections, because that's all you can bring on a highway to stage it. You weld it together, and you keep going. When I say weld, if it's plastic, you use adhesives, it melts the plastic together. If it's metal, it's welded. There's a company in Germany that makes a foldable, very thin element, and it's pulled through, unlike the harder pipe, which doesn't take bends very easily, this can be pulled through in a matter of hours, a few days. You pull the whole thing right through. And we're investigating, it's been used in the States, in New York, some other locations. Our engineers, consulting engineers, are talking to the people. The company that makes it has trained installers, a number of companies in the U.S. that do this installing. It's just not anybody that does this. It is pulled through, they've put a, put a line through the, the pipe, they pull this in a deflated manner, it's folded up, and then at the end, they introduce either water or air, and opens the, opens the internal pipe to the full size. It stays flexible, and there'll be a space between that pipe and the existing pipe. That's what appears to be the best hope for us right now. So the staging of this, the, the contract for the installer, the references for everybody, the size of this coil of pipe, which would be over 5,000 feet long, because you can't join it in the middle of the process, all that's being investigated to determine how, in fact, when we could do this. If that turns out to be right, then when could we do it? In the meantime, we're sustaining the leak, but of course, if we don't sell water, if we shut the pipe down, we're using less water, it's, it's Sophie's Choice. We only get paid when you use the water. So at this time, it seemed more practical to release the water ban, let people use the water. It's turning out to be a fairly wet season, we haven't hit the dry spell yet, and so things are working out all right. Besides that, people don't want to be shut down in the middle of summer. In all likelihood, it will take us a number of weeks, or maybe several months, to sign this up. Once we decide to do it in a particular way, if that's the choice, it will take us time to set that up, and it will likely be done in the fall, that's my guess. And that, that's when the lawns go away, that's when the flowers go away, washing of cars, the washing of, the extra, the pools, all the extra uses of water, slow down. And so that might be the best time to do this. When that occurs, and we will be providing information to the public, as we have been all along, we'll give people ample notice of this. But that's where we stand right now. It looks promising, but we have engineers who are evaluating this to make absolutely sure. It's the best guess. And someone, someone can say, "Well, what happened? How long's it going to last?" You know, our pipeline was estimated to last at least 50 years. Who knew this would occur? And so the pipelines that are, the twin lines that East Providence has, were put back, put in back in the 60s, those, those units are embedded, in fact, now I think some of them are exposed. They were in trenches, twin lines, in trenches going across the bay. When we went to put our line in, in the same way, conservationists said, "No, no, don't do that, because the jewelry industry has put too many dangerous chemicals and materials down into the bottom of the bay, and we don't want to disturb that if you dig a trench." So, we have this unusual setup. But, we're dealing with it as best we can. Right now, we've probably expended somewhere in the neighborhood, we authorized somewhere close to $800,000. We haven't expended all that. We think that will cover us until we get ready to do the project. At that point, we will have the final numbers on what the estimated cost will be. As my report tells you, in the meantime, we are determining, can we expedite Phase One, which we're intending to put in? We're moving along on that, and so we have a, a pretty good idea how fast we can go on that. The project should be designed this fall, and bid, and then you start the work as soon as the, the new season comes next year. We're also looking at expediting Phase Two. Therein comes the problem. Takes, takes time, because it's several times longer than Phase One, and in far more complicated territory. So we're evaluating a number of other routes. Pottucket Avenue is a strong route, but when you're, when you're dealing with, with major routes that go through the centers of town, even though we've had all this studied out several years ago, in a, in a year-long study by Camp Drescher and McKee, we want to be able to do it the fastest way possible. These are things that we're looking into. Probably the only bright news that I can offer you is that we got word that all three councils approved what the committee recommended, and so we authorized our attorney to prepare the documents, so that the towns can all sign, and the Water Authority can sign, and we can get rid of, over the several years, get rid of the hydrant fees and the, and the other, other part of this, the pilot. Yes, you look like you have a question?
I had a question about something that's not directly in the report, but it was new meters being installed, the smart meters?
Yes.
Some folks have had concerns about the safety, health safety of them, and we're wondering if they're able to opt out. Are people able to not have the smart meters installed?
If you don't want to have it installed, I think right now, we've arrived at the simplest point, and that's you put in a meter pit. You put in a meter pit. Everyone, everyone who has, I mean, this is, this is a little bit like, like climate change. You have some scientists who say, "This is not a problem." We have other scientists who say, "This is a sham." Okay? And so, depending upon what side you're on, that's who you believe.
Oh, yeah, I'm not...
And it doesn't make any difference how much detail is offered from the other side, you still believe that. Now, we've come across some of those situations. We have meters that can show you that there's more radiation coming out of your electric wiring in your house than coming out of this meter. But never mind, the only way to deal with this is to take the meter away from the house. And the way you do that is you put a meter pit in, and that's near the street, because you come off the street, off the line, usually in a straight line, to your foundation. And so if you put the meter next to the street, which is on town property, because there's a space there after the roadway, which is town property, the meter pit goes in there, that's where your meter is, that meter can be read by us, by anybody, it won't be anywhere near your house or near you. And that's, that's the, the only recommendation that we currently are working with, and we have at least one or two people that we're dealing with. We have had some people come to us, and, and there are categories of individuals who come. Some want things taken care of, because they are deathly afraid of space invaders and what have you. Others, a cancer victim I've talked with, this family is definitely afraid of this, there's no changing their mind, the meter pit is the way for them to deal with it. But at the same time, they're not demanding that we give them a different kind of a meter, they're willing to work with us, and they'll probably end up paying for this for their peace of mind. So we'll, we'll install a meter pit.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm happy to deal with you, any of comments or questions. Probably the smartest thing you can do is point them to me, or the, or call the Water Authority, because this is an issue that you certainly are intelligent enough to get involved with. I don't think you want to do that.
Mr. President, may I, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Alan, we're losing upwards of 500,000 gallons of water a day, I think, and I don't think...
A little less than that, but, okay.
And I don't think they're giving it to us for free, so...
Absolutely not.
So, between the cost of the repair, and the cost of the water we're losing that we're paying for that's leaking out of the pipe, have you, has anyone started to take a look at the impact on ratepayers?
Right now, there should be none. The, the rate, the, the impact will be determined once, once we decide finally the direction that we're going to go, and if we're going to use this pipe, happens to be Primus is the name of the company, we will have that information available. It's, we're spending about, and the number escapes me a little, but it's about $2.5 million for water. The rest of it, the bulk of, of our expenses is administering and managing the water company, and, you know, everything that goes with it, the pipes, the tanks, the office staff, all the rest of that. And so that's why you have two charges. You have the water use charge, and you have the base charge, because even if you're in Florida all year... Because even if you're in Florida all year, you know, we still gotta read your meter, and we still gotta be there if there's a fire, and so all that's gotta take place. So a number of years ago, we split that off from one charge to a base charge and a water use charge.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll give you ample time on that. We understand your point, and that's been made by various directors, and, and our executive directors well aware of that. We're, we're, we're gonna balance that carefully. But right now, because we can't just jump in until we get the evaluations made, and the determination of how long it takes them to build it, we, by the way, we put a hold on some stock. So we already took some action, which either may disappear, or we may have to put some money down to deal with it. But it's a guessing game, and we're trying to, to, we're trying to optimize our guess, put it that way. But we're well aware of this. We're well aware of this.
I have, I have a very short question.
Sure.
What is the material that this inner sleeve, the foldable?
I think it's a, it's a combination of several, I think it's Kevlar is, is one of the main materials. And one of the great benefits of this is not only can it be installed much quicker than, than segmented, welded-together piece and all the staging, and all the time it takes to pull that through, but it also takes angles. You know, we are straight, we begin to go, there's an angle, we go down, curve down 180 feet, come back up again. And so if you have solid pipe, that becomes very difficult. You have to break off before you get to that curve, you have to change everything. You cannot, rigid pipe won't take that kind of a curve. But this pipe will take that kind of a curve. So that, that enhances its, its optimization, if you will.
Okay. Thank you.
And anyone has any time, you have a question about this, don't hesitate to call me, call, call any of the, of the directors, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do this and, and deal with any issue you have, and get you the information you wish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you now.
If, I'm wondering if, if there is any objection to taking this out of order? We have some folks here for the resolutions. Any objection to moving 21 up to this point?
I would suggest we take 16, only because I know one person is here for that, and it shouldn't take all that long.
Okay.
Hate to have him sitting around.
I didn't know anyone was here for that. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on the Parks and Rec Commission approval, motion to recommend Barrington Little League be permitted to build two shade structures at Little League dugouts at Sherwood Park. Please, come forward.
Good evening, Aaron Aguirre for Tiffany Circle, and I'm a representative of the Barrington Little League. Ms. Breyer, thank you for allowing me to keep number 16. I have been working with John Munquita. Over the last few years, we've worked on some projects to make improvements to the fields, and this year, at the suggestion of our families, we would like to start adding covers or roofs to our dugouts. It's a safety issue, foul balls can come into the dugouts on hot days. The last month, every Saturday seems to be a great hot Saturday, and just there's no shade at any of our, our fields. So it would serve both purposes. This is something that we've gone with the Park and Rec Department to talk about. Can we do this? How do we go about doing this? I know that on the agenda, it mentions Sherwood, which is our, our primary field, we use that for regular season All-Star play. But the overall comprehensive plan would be over the next several years, to do this one field a year. We use approximately four different fields for All-Stars, there's certain requirements. Dugout covers at this time is not a requirement, however, it is something that we feel is beneficial to the league and to our players.
And this has already been approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the DPW has looked at this as well?
Yes.
Is that plan for putting it out at the other fields, is that already thought out, a written plan, or is it just that, what you'd hope to do in the future?
I have it written out, just a year in which field, if you'd like a copy, I can certainly hand it to you, but...
It was more, so we have an ad hoc fields athletic advisory committee. And it was just if that group could have access to that, because we're looking comprehensively at all of the athletic fields in town, and I think it'd be good to know what the league's plan to do and would like to do, to roll in as part of that evaluation.
Certainly, I could forward that to Mr. Breyer, and we're, we're both members of the Barrington Little League, and easy enough to give him a copy. But essentially, also, we were founded in 1951, and so in 2021, our 70th anniversary, we were hoping to return some dugout covers to at least one field at Haynes Park. For those who don't know, years ago, we actually had real dugouts, they were cinder block, in-the-ground dugouts, for a variety of reasons, they were removed. And so one of the things that was lost was the shade aspect of that. So we'd like to be able to return to having that as an option. So, are there any other, other questions? Thank you very much, for your time.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize Barrington Little League to construct two permanent shade structures over the dugouts at Sherwood Park.
Second?
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next item, we'll jump to 21 to discuss an act on resolutions. The first is a resolution approving the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 1.1 million 125,000. This is something that passed at the Financial Town Meeting, and I'm told we need to do this again. I think we, we actually voted on this the night of that as a council, but we need to do it after.
Ratifying it, yes.
Okay.
Clarify.
Clarify, okay. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to ratify Financial Town Meeting approval for the issuance of general obligation bonds and/or notes in an amount not to exceed 1 million 125,000 to fund the acquisition of open space.
Second.
Made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And the next item is a resolution to encourage all Rhode Islanders to be counted and participate in the census. Obviously, that has significant impacts on us and the possibility that we may end up going to one representative in Congress. So we hope that we can encourage folks to participate. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I have a, a question about it. So part of it was raising, encouraging the, I forget the name of the group, but the census committee to raise 1.2 million dollars. Is that through state funding, I assume? What, where is it that they raised the money? Just before I ask them to do it, I, I want to know where they plan to do it from.
Could you, I, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
So in, where's the money coming from? From Rhode Island Complete Count, they're seeking to raise 1.2 million dollars.
Yeah, the second to last paragraph, the first, be it further resolved.
I, I do not know the answer to that question. Not from the Town Council Contingency Fund.
That would just about tap it out.
That's what I was worried, no.
That would tap it out, right. Rhode Island Complete Count Committee to raise 1.2 million to build a community outreach It's a good question.
So in, in that we don't know where that piece comes from, I would move to amend it to just strike that paragraph, and, and still encourage the first and the third, be it resolved.
Is a motion to modify the resolution, is there a second?
Guess I'll second.
Made and seconded, to modify this. Any further discussion?
It's too bad nobody's here to answer that question.
I have additional information. I don't have it at my fingertips, I'm looking for something.
Yeah, this, if, if I can, I think, because Mary and I were at the same thing, there was a presentation on this at the meeting of the state, town, and city clerks. And my recollection is that they were going to be looking for it from a variety of sources, including many of the private foundations in Rhode Island, and nonprofits, and non-governmental organizations. There did not seem to be any direct appeal to the municipal governments, it was more just wanting the general support of it, is my recollection. Not that they were looking for the money from the municipal governments. Would you concur with that?
Can I hand you this additional information, Andy, and then can we come back to this?
Yes, we'll go, we'll skip this one and go to the next one, and give you a chance to look at that, so we're better informed. So the next resolution is a resolution to call on the General Assembly to pass legislation to make our community safer by banning assault weapons, citing the, the House bill and the Senate bill, large-capacity magazines, citing the House, Senate bill, and concealed weapons on K through 12 school grounds, the House and Senate bill. And we have some folks here from Moms Demand Action. We have Mr. Bilderback here, who's, who's been doing this and come before us in the past. Would anyone like to be heard on this?
I think most of you know me, but Willis Bilderback, 260 Sohams Road. I'm Vice Chair of the Rhode Island Coalition Against Gun Violence, and on behalf of the Coalition, I just want to thank you all for considering this resolution. I also want to thank you for the moment of silence you provided for the victims and the community in Virginia Beach. Nobody expects a mass shooting to happen in their community, and when it does, it really rips the community apart in ways that last for a very long time. And I think if something like that ever happened here in Rhode Island, we're gonna be asking ourselves, "Did we do enough to prevent this?" And unfortunately, at the moment, I believe the answer would be no. And these three bills that you're looking at, I believe the, this is the fifth year that we've been promoting the high-capacity magazine ban in the General Assembly, and just as a point of fact, the shooter in the Virginia Beach shooting used high-capacity magazines. He also used a silencer, which is something that's not addressed by those bills, but it is something that we have for the past several years managed to defeat bills that would deregulate silencers. And silencers can really make these kinds of shootings much more deadly, and that appears to have been the case here. As you mentioned, I have been before you before, I believe, may have been two years ago, and asked you to pass a resolution in favor of what we're calling the Safe Schools Act. I remember the one Republican who was on the committee at the time, Steve Permiano, said to me, "Well, I probably don't agree with you about many things, but this one's a no-brainer." And he voted in favor of the resolution, which I very much appreciated. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear to be a no-brainer to some people in the State House, and we are continuing to work on them and, and bring them around. We have really made a lot of strides over the past two years in terms of getting more support for our bills. We have more cosigners on these than we ever have, including a majority in the Senate for all of these bills, and I think close to a majority in the House for all of them as well. When I started doing this, the Safe Schools Bill had one sponsor. So we really are making some serious progress, and we're gonna keep fighting. Thanks.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Assuming that the Moms Demand Action are...
Jennifer Boylan, 140 Lincoln Avenue. I'm a volunteer leader with Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. We also are grateful that you're considering this resolution. I echo everything that Pete said, gun violence, senseless gun violence is preventable, it kills more than 100 people a day in our country, and we call upon our lawmakers in the General Assembly to do the right thing, to have courage, and to, to do their part to help fix this. And we appreciate this resolution being considered as part of that.
Before we vote on it, does anyone want to be heard on this?
I, I would like to add to the resolution. So in the, in the bullets citing the shootings, to add, Virginia Beach, May 31st, 2019, where a shooter killed 12 and wounded four in a municipal building, including an extended gun battle with police using multiple high-capacity magazines. I have it written, I can send it.
So if you, if you can email that to Mary, she can add that to this, okay? That's, anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution calling on the General Assembly to pass legislation to make our community safer by banning assault weapons, H5741 and S635, large-capacity magazines, H5739 and S637, and concealed weapons on K-12 school grounds, H5762 and S636, with the amendment included.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. I've always believed that in response to shootings like at Virginia Beach and so many others, I, I really believe that thoughts and prayers are necessary, but not sufficient. And I hope that this, this will encourage our General Assembly to take action. So going back to our next, our previous item, have we, have we determined anything further about the funding sources?
Not specifically, as I said, it did seem, the concern was, there are a lot, because there are a lot of hard-to-count populations in Rhode Island, because of the ethnic diversity and the language issues, that they're, they're going to be seeking it from charitable foundations and so forth, because it ties in with their mission. If, if the funding is cut through the federal funds, because they're not counted, then it will increase the private support. I will say, it does also say here, "Support state funding allocations for outreach and communications efforts around the 2020 census." So I assume that they're also gonna be looking for money from the General Assembly as well, based on that.
Thank you. So there's a motion made and seconded. I would just like to say that I'm comfortable with the language as is, I'm, I'm comfortable with them fundraising through Rhode Island Foundation and so on, or even seeking to have the General Assembly provide some funding or federal sources. So I, I would oppose the amendment, if, if it remains.
Well, so, you know, hearing that the, the primary goal is from private sources, foundations and likewise, that, that's fine. I just didn't want to have no idea where we're encouraging them to get money from.
So do you take back?
So I'll withdraw my, my motion, if Kate will withdraw her second.
Withdraw my second.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion? Can, does anyone want to make a motion?
Where are we? I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution encouraging all Rhode Islanders to be counted and participate in Census 2020.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. So going back to item 17, which is discuss an act on the polystyrene ban, we, Jim, why don't you kind of introduce why we're, why we're talking about this?
Yeah, so I, we had a meeting with three representatives from Shores, that included the store manager, the district manager, and their corporate food safety officer. It included the store manager, the district manager, and their corporate food safety officer. And most concerning to them is the ban on PET, which is also the Resin Code Number One that we had in our resolution. And their thought was that it should not be Resin Code One that's banned, but it should be Resin Code Five. And so I reached out to Kate and to see if perhaps we had misinterpreted One, Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six. And I think Kate went back to Clint and asked him, our resident expert, and Kate, I guess you can...
His response was, and he sent this overview of types of plastic, which I looked at today and really tried to get a handle on all of this. And it does make more sense when, as you read it over and over again. But Clint's response was that PPE, which is number five, is perhaps the least toxic consumer plastic. This is a better choice than PET or PS, although it has low clarity, which may be limiting in some case. PET is number one, or PS, which is six. PET, number one, is part of the toxic trio along with PVC and PS, and was very deliberately included in the polystyrene ban that was put out by the Sierra Club and which Brookline, Mass. has passed but will not implement until, actually, when we do as well, January 1st. So I want to stress that it was very deliberately included. Many other communities have banned all plastics, one through six, such as Nantucket and Oakland, California, and have moved to compostables. I would suggest that Shaw's consider compostable PLA where appropriate. They could prepackage less or package on demand, including self-service. So he seems to dispute Shaw's view on number one as opposed to number five. So I'm not sure that we should do anything.
I think armed with your explanation, we'll reengage with Shaw's. And I want to stress, Shaw's has been very cooperative in this process, and they're not pushing back. They're asking a question, and I think once they get the answer, they will work at trying to get as quickly as possible. And, you know, we may consider a way before a short period of time to allow them to do that because sometimes getting the products online, but they've implemented most of it already. They've already changed out many of their shelving of polystyrene. So I will reengage with them.
Okay, I really appreciate that. There was one other thing that they brought to our attention, which is the restriction of only, from retail, only foam, expanded foam polystyrene. And I thought, my first reaction was that wasn't our intention. I would think that our intention would be to remove all the items that are made out of One, Three, and Six that deal with, that are considered food service ware, to remove those from the shelves. If we're asking pretty much everyone in town, including Town Hall or on town property, and our food establishments not to use those products, I can't understand why we wouldn't also want those removed from retail shelves. And so I actually wanted to amend it. 161-13C says retail establishments are prohibited from selling or distributing foam polystyrene food service ware to customers. And that doesn't cover... Or the rigid foam, expanded foam. I think that's what the...
I had the same understanding as you, that all of the items that were part of the ban were also retail.
But that isn't what it says, which is... And I brought that up to Clint, and he said, I think his response was, he didn't know of any place that actually did that. It was only expanded foam, not the other foam, the rigid foam.
If we were to amend it, we would need to go through the process of amending with introduction and so forth.
Right.
So maybe we can have, as part of your discussions with Shaw's, you can mention to them that section what? We may be considering a future amendment on that. I'd sure like to get their input as to whether there's any objection to that.
I mean, I thought our whole purpose was to get rid of the red solo cups, you know? That was one of the items that you get rid of. That's also, it would also, you know, take out plastic straws and stirs, those little plastic stirs, which are really insidious.
We may have covered that because there's a language that says that it can't be recycled.
But not in the retail, retail establishments. It's only retail establishments are prohibited from selling or distributing foam polystyrene service ware to customers. Retail establishments are prohibited from selling prepared food in foam polystyrene food service ware. Food establishments can't provide stirs or plastic straws, but they can sell them.
I remember even asking, does that mean that the plastic cups that you can buy for sale now can no longer be bought? And the answer to that was yes.
In Barrington?
Right.
Yeah, but that isn't how this...
Right, it's not. So I wonder if it's...
So I think we should go through the process of amending it.
Okay, well, Mary, can we put that on the agenda for the next time to introduce this? Introduce an amendment, we'll provide the language for that amendment before, in plenty of time for our July 29 meeting.
Solicitor will be amending that ordinance for...
Yes, if you can just, that's section, one more time for him, section...
161-13, Regulation of Disposable Food Service Ware.
Would it be simpler if we just, we have A and B of food establishments, C and D of retail establishments? If we were to amend those four paragraphs, subparagaphs, to say food and retail establishments, would that kind of cover all bases?
It might. Was only the, "Retail establishments shall comply with the implementation with this article relating to disposable food service ware and packing materials no later than July 1st. All other persons were subject to no later than January 1st." So it's the time, implementation time that was different for each.
Right, but if we change just 161-13, A, B, C, and D to say retail and food, that wouldn't change the timelines for anyone. It would just kind of clarify that they're all following the same rules. Even if they don't sell those products, it just kind of, everyone's under the same ban.
Well, I wonder if an easy way to amend it is if we add in the definition section, forbidden products. And then we define the three types of plastics in that section. And then each place that we're talking about it is using that forbidden product.
Well, that's what A says. A says, "Food establishments are prohibited from providing prepared food to any person using polystyrene polyvinyl." That's Six, Three, and One. I think Jim's suggestion might work.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have it in front of me. If that works.
I mean, if they don't sell that product, then they don't have to worry about it. But at least we've captured all the establishments by saying food and retail for all of those.
Yeah. Okay. So let's take, I mean, we can amend it differently if we, if you wouldn't mind circulating a red line draft of that. We can look at it, and if it doesn't make sense, sort of in the...
It's the foam part.
We want to make sure it's both foam and rigid.
Or polystyrene polyvinyl chloride and polyethylene terephthalate.
Yeah, if that is just changed to plastics One, Three, and Six.
Well, we were concerned about, the reason that we said plastic often identified with Resin Code One is because...
It could change the identification.
Yeah, we don't want to do that. We want to just, so that wasn't meant to be a part of the definition so much as just a reference.
Because under polystyrene, it talks about...
Foam and...
Extruded foam, expanded and extruded foams. Rigid or oriented polystyrene is generally used to make clear clamshell. And I think that's where it's not clear. If we said polystyrene, "Retail establishments are prohibited from selling or distributing polystyrene food service ware to customers."
Let's take a shot at it, and when we introduce it, we can modify it at that point, and we'll be able to look at it, you know, have some time to look at it.
Okay.
So we'll put it on the...
Does the solicitor understand what I'm trying to...
Court.
Okay, great.
Once I see it too, we can have a call.
I'll make sure, when I disrobe the red line, I'll make sure that Mike and Andy are on the disrobe list so they can take a look as well.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
The next item is to discuss and act on municipal waste initiative. This is Councilor Breyer's initiative.
So this came up, I asked President Carroll to add this to the agenda following a trip to Boulder, Colorado, where pretty much anywhere that you see waste bins in public have multiple categories, either recycle, compost, or landfill. And that's how they label it, landfill, not just garbage. And it got me thinking just that as a town, we can be doing even better than we're already doing. I know we have one of the better recycling rates, and we save on tipping fees there, but I just...
We have the best.
Best.
Just to be clear, we have the best.
And just wanting to start discussing what we can do. I know other folks are interested in doing more composting and to see how we can start rolling out some initiatives. I know Barrington Farm School has compost available. They do it on-site, and they have bins. I just found this out over the weekend. They have bins that you can take with you, fill your compost, bring it back to them. Finding a way to either help them and groups like them expand it or doing more directly.
I'd just like to add that the Conservation Commission has taken on this whole issue of recycling. And I believe at their next meeting in June, they are hoping to have the spokesperson for Rhode Island Resource Recovery come to answer their questions, all about recycling. They've also begun investigating composting, town composting. So I think I would expect some initiatives coming forward from the Conservation Commission, but if you'd like to attend that meeting...
It's this one's...
Yeah, but I've got to make sure that that person is...
Actually coming.
Is coming, yes.
If I can add, and Mary, help me out here, we are, I think I put it in my update to the council, that we are, the department heads are touring Rhode Island Recycling Center. And so any council member is more than welcome to join us. I'll make sure that that date gets put out. It's 12:30 during the week, 12:30.
And what day was that? Seventeen?
June 17th.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
We'll be carpooling from here, so. The other thing, Alan and I have talked about some initiatives for recycling, and one of the things we discussed is the composting issue. And what he's discovered through his research is that municipal food composting becomes problematic without bins. You know, to do it in your home in a drum is one thing, but to do it down at Walker Farm or whatever just leads to a lot of ferment problems that we don't necessarily need.
There are, so, Mary, I would ask that if you wouldn't mind just making a note and reaching out to Rob Hart, who's the Chair of the Resilience Committee, who's really interested in the composting issue. And he's hired for himself a company that will come and collect his compostables, process that stuff, and then once a year, he gets things back.
Jim told us of somebody right here in our organization that does the same.
Wendy down in the assessor's office does it. And they come once a week and pick up her pail filled with garbage, food waste, and leave an empty pail. But she actually has to pay for that service.
Right, right, as does he. So if you wouldn't mind just telling him of the upcoming Conservation Commission, I would text him right now, but I don't want to do it in the middle of a meeting. Just let him know that the new date is...
I can contact him. I've got to make sure that she's coming. It's the... The nozo, I think.
Should we wait to see what...
What's on the agenda?
Kind of alert him that it could be that, but wait to see what the agenda states, and then I'll pick up the agenda and send it to him, but you and I will stay in contact, Kate?
Yeah.
So I would also say that since they're already working on it, it doesn't sound like we need to refer it to them. But maybe you could just let the Conservation Commission know that there's a lot of interest in the composting issue.
One piece that I'd be curious to learn more about would be the cost of having pickup and the estimated savings on the tipping fees because compostable waste is much heavier than ordinary waste. It's the heavier things. And so if it's going to cost something to have pickup several places throughout town, it still might be a net savings if we're reducing our tipping fees. So I'd just be curious to look at what that...
Yeah, and there's also a, you know, we could even just encourage people, as we have with Solarize, we didn't actually pay for solar panels, but we helped them to get a lower price for solar panels. We could find ways to get, help people through a bigger purchasing power, get composting bins, or even a service like this that people could pay for at a lower rate because it's a bigger group. And we're saving on the tipping fees.
There was a discussion, somebody came and presented their program. They said it was cost prohibitive for them to pick up at individual homes, which they do in Portland, Oregon, but that we could probably set up something where there was a bin or two bins at our recycling center that people could bring to, and possibly at schools.
So that was the thing that I asked Alan to look into, because I thought about that...
The municipal, that's the municipal...
We probably don't want vermin, I mean, that's really a different, if you have compostable goods, what I'm hearing is the problem is that you're going to have a rat problem if you do it in a large quantity. If you do it in a large quantity as opposed to doing in smaller quantities.
Well, the, these bins are smallish. I mean, they're picked up every week. I compost at my house...
I know.
And I don't have rats.
You don't compost for 16,000 people.
No, that's true, but 16,000 people are not going to bring, yes.
Thank you, Council. My name's Kelvin, 221 Promenade. I just want, for the record, all the compost entities that I'm aware of in southern New England, they don't have vermin problems. Alan is DWP, I believe.
Yes. Public Works Director.
And when it's managed, you don't have an issue. If it's not managed, then you will have an issue. And I have a plot at Walker Farm, one of the community garden plots, and I know that Frankie from DWP goes and brings his big rig over there and turns that on a regular basis. That's sufficient. If you were to add food scraps to that, he's already doing the work and the saving. The costs can be, are there. And I think that we as a town, we could explore the opportunities that are available because we're, we're kind of missing the financial aspect. And as I mentioned repeatedly here in the town, we as residents don't have any options except to compost in our backyard. We got a few places like the farm school where now residents can, you know, bring the food scraps, but we really don't have options. And it would be nice if we did have options and were able to manage our waste more responsibly. And I can't even say that it's waste because when you look at the final product from composting, it's not waste, it's resources. We're literally throwing money away. So I would hope that the council will take into consideration and I'll have to round up with the Conservation to see what they're doing on that. But it'd be great if we can really focus on the town instead of waiting for our state to, you know, do something. Because Rhode Island Resource Recovery is not doing anything either. They're not taking scraps, you know? So, thank you for your time.
Excuse me, what was your name again?
Kelvin Mazurski.
Thank you. So we don't, I guess they're already working on it. Yeah, we've identified a couple of things for them to look into. I think it's great that the Conservation Commission is on this.
They're very enthusiastic.
There's a lot of enthusiasm.
Yes.
Next item is to discuss and act on a vote to authorize, to delegate authority to the town manager to make expenditures in the Capital Reserve account for items falling under the small purchase amount set forth in Rhode Island General Law's 4555-9. If you look back into our, I'm just trying to see, did we, in our consent agenda, we approved of a Capital Reserve payment...
Twenty-two...
Two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. If that payment was fifty dollars, we would still have to approve it.
Yeah.
So it seems a little silly. And, and so delegating authority, and then it becomes a question of how much authority to delegate. Right now, we, we have a statute which sets forth the amount required for bid, which kind of sets, it's a, it's a, it's a changing target, but it basically says around nine thousand dollars. Is that what it is?
It's about nine thousand dollars for a single purchase and it's about eighteen thousand dollars for a project. And it varies with CPI. I think Kathy gets the data from the state on a quarterly or semi-annual basis that sets that standard.
So the question is whether, how much we want to be involved in payments from the Capital Reserve account. These could be anything from the cost of sliced seating for the Department of Public Works, for a field, to buying, I don't know, seed even.
Concrete and stone for the Mathewson seawall, you know, which we buy on pallets of, of rocks, that type of thing.
So my view is that I don't really think we need to be micromanaging at that, at that level. If someone has a different idea about what level it should be, that seemed like a good reasonable number.
Basically aligns with what we do with the operating budget. So they would be treated, the limits would be treated the same.
I had a question on this one. And so I looked up what the Rhode Island State law was and saw, in 1992, it was set at five thousand and 10,000 to be adjusted with CPI. And it just, I had no idea what those numbers were going to be, but that's the nine thousand, eighteen thousand. And given that this money is, these expenditures are already coming from a restricted account that we've already established to be used for a certain purpose, I, I think it could make sense to just use the larger number for either type because they're already all capital projects, whereas the small purchase, the small purchase amount could be for capital or operating. And so, given that these are both capitals, setting it at the capital or just...
I, if we're buying a single item, I think whether it's out of capital or operating, we're restricted to those amounts. So I think those levels of nine and eighteen thousand are as high as we could possibly go. As much as I'd like to have Councilman, Councilor Breyer's suggestion taken, I don't think I can buy a single item without council approval that costs more than nine thousand dollars, even if it's out of, out of the Capital Reserve.
So I think that nine thousand dollar figure makes sense. I think if we got a 10,000 dollar item, I'm trying to think, we, we questioned the chief pretty hard on his million dollar fire truck, but, but he got it. There's not a lot of time, I can't remember the last time we've, we've said no to a request that, I don't want to say that any request will, will pass muster, but they have all so far. So I think if it's, if it's above that nine thousand dollar figure, you're probably not going to have trouble getting approval. It's just a question of whether we need to see all of the little ones.
Right.
So with that in mind, does somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion. For items falling under the small purchase amount set in Rhode Island General Law 4555-9.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Discuss and act on the minutes of the April 1, 2019. This is, this was an issue that Kathy raised at our last meeting. She just wanted it clarified.
I think if you refer to the Town Manager Memo, under item 19 is where it's probably the clearest as to what her recommendation is about deleting language and actually adding language that makes it more specific.
Right. So this isn't actually a change, this, this isn't a change, the minutes, it's more a motion, but...
Yeah, that's true.
I'll make a motion to amend the motion minutes from the April 1st, 2019 Town Council Meeting to better clarify the requirement for Town Council approval of the expenditure of funds from newly created assigned fund balance account as follows. In any year, should the unassigned fund balance exceed the 30% recommended level, one half of the excess will be transferred to a Capital Reserve account to augment future SIP, Capital Improvement Program allocations. Town Council approval is required to spend from this assigned fund balance account.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item is to discuss and act on bids. This is a bid for the roofing for the PEC Center. And what was the, what was the original number? Did that come down?
It was just under two. I think it was...
So it's come down.
One...
The original lower bid was 1,888,000. And through the negotiating process that we followed, it's now about 200,000 less than that.
That's great.
I have a question. I need clarification on this. It said in your, your memo that the cost estimate, the original cost estimate, which assumed synthetic slate rather than natural slate totaled 1.283 million. And that's what you set, we set the bond for. Then, when it came in at close to 2 million, you went through another process that, where the two companies gave their best offer going through a list of items to do. And the first item is synthetic slate in lieu of natural slate, and that was rejected. What was the original bid for? I thought it...
That was just a cost estimate exercised by GMI Architects. They hired a roof, roofing expert to give us a, a cost estimate for a roof replacement job. And that's what, that's what we use in addition to the senior center renovation and tap-in renovation estimates to get the bond.
But you used, the original cost estimate was for synthetic slate?
That was, that was, yes. Yes, it was. That was for, but the thought at the time was that the, the, the real slate would cost way too much, but in actual, actuality, it's only 50,000 more and it'll last many more years and, and look a lot better. So the slate was the preferred option just because of those factors.
So, so your, the original bid that went out...
Wasn't, the original wasn't a bid, it was just an estimate.
Okay, was it, okay. It included real slate and synthetic?
As a base bid. The original, as advertised, the, based on the designs by Brewster Thornton, included an, an alternate for synthetic slate. So the base bid was the authentic, real slate. And to provide, just to give us a number, if it's like 300,000 less or something, just kind of crazy number like that, you know, we just want to be able to consider it. But it was only 50,000 roughly less than real slate.
All right. When, so you're, you're going with real slate?
That's the recommendation.
If you went to synthetic slate and Apollo Roofing, you would, you would get 50,000 more taken from, from the final. If you hadn't rejected that, you'd take 50,000?
It would be, the bid would be 1,600 and...
It'd be 50,000 less.
Okay.
If we use synthetic.
Then in number eight, there's a clarification, Inspire Synthetic Slate may be considered as an alternative manufacturer in lieu of DaVinci and EcoStar, but samples must be provided. That's also 50,000. Is that 50,000 in addition to, so would that be a, if...
That was the same number.
That was rejected as well?
We were rejecting it twice. One is the base bid, alternate, and the original bid, and that was 50,000 offered by Apollo and they repeated the same number. RD Preservation offered 48,000 and based on the clarification, they offered 55,000. But we rejected it either way.
Okay, so you rejected it. If you accepted it, it would be 50,000 less.
The bid would be 50,000 less.
My concern is that if this were, if we were talking about Town Hall, I would absolutely insist that it had real slate, which it does. For that building, the roof is very, you, the only way you see that roof is from the street. You cannot, you know, you can't tell whether that's, I never even knew there was slate up there.
It's not slate.
What?
It's not real slate. Existing.
No.
Oh, I think you meant the library.
The library.
That's not slate.
Well, then why are we putting slate on it?
It's, it's the most cost effective. The synthetic does not last as long. So if we put the synthetic on, we'd be replacing that roof sooner. So by expending the extra 50,000 for real slate, it will extend the life of the roof and actually be more cost effective.
Okay. My concern about all of that was that because this bid is so high still, it cuts out, out significantly from the improvements of the senior center as well as the tap-in renovations. And it just seems unfortunate that, that the roof sort of took over those improvements. And I, but I, I, I needed to hear that the, the real slate would, you know, would last longer, but...
It's really kind of an unknown product. The synthetic's kind of an unknown as well. It will change color, it will look different over time. And yeah, it's unknown how long it will last.
Okay.
What's the current roof?
It's a, it's a, I think it's asphalt slash asbestos. So that's a big chunk of this money unfortunately, is asbestos abatement. Getting rid of that stuff. We also had, that we didn't know about when we did the original estimate, we had some structural reinforcement underneath the mechanical units.
It's unfortunate that we bonded, I, I think that we bonded it that way because we're, we are going to shortchange the renovations in the, the lower part of the library.
Fortunately, if you remember, Kathy found 470,000 to add to the project.
I'd like to ask at some future council meeting that we discuss kind of what the plan is for the two spaces.
Yeah, and the way we planned it out was, and the architect has worked a design, a basic design for both, and it's kind of a, an aspirational plan, but the roof was the priority because of all the damage it's causing in the library. And so once we get done with the roof and came with a final number, then we'll know what numbers to shoot for, for the tap-in and the senior center. And for the tap-in, it would be, it would be life, safety issues would be the priority there. There's some significant problems with the old building, the old school rooms that need to be addressed and some petitions that were put up that don't meet fire code and that type of thing.
Yeah, just down the road, a kind of a lengthy explanation once the roof's settled and we can...
Well, that bid will be coming back to you. It will go through the same process and we're, we're working, I met with tap-in last week and we're obviously working with Michelle to get the, you know, we'll prioritize what we can do in each place to make sure that we're addressing the most significant issues first.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Before you make the motion, I'd like to make a small edit to, I'm not sure what the motion you have in front of you, but rather than say to include a 10% contingency, could you restate that to say with an additional 10% contingency? It's a little bit, it's kind of hard to figure out what exactly you're saying, whether that number...
The motion in the Town Manager's Memo is correct.
Okay, great.
I'll make a motion to award a bid to Apollo Roofing and Sheet Metal LLC, Providence, Rhode Island, in the amount of 1,698,000 with an additional 10% contingency to replace the PEC Center roof with a new roofing system, structural reinforcement, and related abatement and repairs.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item on our agenda is introducing two ordinances. The first is an introduction of Ordinance 2019-17 to... The first is an introduction of ordinance 2019-17 to an amendment to Chapter 185 zoning, establish agriculture rural zoning.
I'll make a motion to do that and to advertise for three consecutive weeks and schedule a public hearing on Monday, July 29th, 2019.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one is bringing notice, written notice requirements in conformance with state requirements.
I'll make a motion to introduce 2019-18, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 185 zoning, Section 185-49, written requirements, and to advertise for three consecutive weeks and schedule a public hearing on Monday, July 29th, 2019. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next set of items is our public hearings. So I am opening the public hearing into an amendment to 2019-7, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 91 Drainage. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this? Seeing no one from the public, closing the public hearing. This is something that, that we've talked about in the past. It's tough, it's tough for folks, but they've got, a lot of people are pumping out their basements. When it ends up in the street and it freezes, it becomes a hazard. Right now, the fine is $20 just for doing that. This would increase it to $50, but it would also put on these folks the cost of having DPW come out in sand and salt or whatever they have to do to, to make that a safer thing. It's tough on people, I know, but we can't have that. That's a dangerous condition, and it has caused accidents.
It, does this, I'm, I'm assuming this includes septic, no, sump pumps?
Yes. And any pumping into the street?
I, one thing we have to be really careful about is that people who currently do this may hire a plumber and attach it to their, their, their inside-
Sewers.
Yeah. Which is against the law.
Right.
And I know that a few years back, we had problems with that because our sewer system is not meant to, to deal with that. And I think there are a lot of people who have sump pumps. I grew up with a sump pump that my stepfather put, had the water coming out of his basement through a hose and a sprinkler, and it looked really crazy during a hurricane, you know, or winter, sprinkling the snow. But that's basically the only thing you can do. And there are a lot of sump pumps in this town. And I, I just worry about the, the unintended consequences of people reverting to something that's even, that's really against the law and over, over-
Not, not to mention impacts our sewage fees.
Yeah.
Because it's going through the treatment plant.
And that's what's-
And if it's done wrong, someone could end up with a basement full of sewage. So.
There's somebody in our neighborhood that, I, I think they should make a fountain or something because this thing is, yeah.
I have a, I have a sump pump and have had three years of trouble with where it's draining for a while. The way it was installed by the builder, it was ruining our lawn and our neighbor's lawn and just pooling there. We tried to fix it one way, it didn't work. We tried to fix it another way, it didn't work. Finally, we have a resolution, and it goes to the side of our property. And then there's a slope, a very gradual slope, and it's about 15 to 20 feet from the road. And I know that there were a couple days in the spring when we were getting a ton of rain where it did kind of pool along the edge of our road. And, I don't know, I would still vote in favor of this, knowing that I could very well-
This issue really is about sheeting on the roads where it runs right across the road.
Right. When the pipe goes right to the road.
I don't think anyone's looking to find someone because there's a frozen puddle in front of their lawn.
Right.
That's, that's not the issue here.
Yeah. We have, as Kate mentioned, there are folks who have a constant, it's constantly pumping in the road.
But what's their solution? It comes out to the street. The pipe is under the lawn or the driveway.
And drains right out onto the street.
And it, it's this high. The water shoots up.
Shoots up like a fountain.
It's startling.
Right at the street. The solution in some places where there are manholes-
Catch basins.
Catch basins is, you can set it up so it could pump into the catch basin.
They need to. They get permission from Department of Public Works.
DPW can give you permission to do that. But if you don't have a catch basin, there's really no solution other than you, you have a wet basement. If you can't find someplace to pump it.
Or you, or you sort of create a rain garden and have it, or a vernal pool.
Well, but if you don't get it away from your house, it just keeps cycling back through.
Right. You have a rain garden, or you might, I mean, if it's a real problem, you might have to have an underground structure, basically a dry well to contain it off-site that way. But I, but I think the concern is here that it's the safety issue of the stuff where it's really sheeting across the street and then it freezes. And yes, we, we live in New England, so the courts here have, we call the, the New England rule. If it's natural accumulation of snow and ice, there's no liability. But if it is unnatural, which would be that case, there's some, there's certainly liability for the homeowner. If someone is in an accident on the ice that they have poured across the road, they're going to be responsible. And there's somewhat of responsibility for the town. Once we're informed of it, that there's a problem, we've got to go out there and salt and sand it and, and deal with it too. So I think that's the idea, that the, the chronic violators are going to have to be spending some of the money to contain their runoff on their own property.
Yep.
Yeah. I think if, and it probably doesn't need to be in, in the ordinance, but if, if policy is to work with the, the folks who have this rather than just slap the fine, which I think it would be, that's kind of our tradition, I think, yeah, even if it is a problem, I think it's still, it's still something we have to control. Yeah.
Yeah. So-
I'll make a motion to adopt 2019-7, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 91 Drainage as presented. Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The next item is an amendment to 148 Public Waters, the Harbor Master. This would put the Harbor Master to report to the Chief of Police. And I am opening the public hearing on that. I don't see anyone from the public here who's interested. Seeing no one, I'm closing the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adopt 2019-10, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 148 Public Waters, Harbor Master as presented. Second.
Can I ask a question of the chief on this? Thanks. You don't have a copy in front of you, so I'll read you what I'm going to ask about. It says, "The Harbor Master and any Harbor Patrol working at the direction of the Harbor Master shall be subject to the day-to-day oversight and supervision of the Barrington Police Department and the Barrington Chief of Police." And it was just that, that phrase right there, Barrington Police Department and the Chief of Police. What's going to be the chain of command here?
Be the normal chain of command, myself.
Right. But I mean, is the Harbor Master going to have another superior in the police department besides you?
No. I don't foresee that.
This was language the Harvard Commission has looked at this and-
I only wonder if we don't strike Barrington Police Department.
And just leave the police chief?
Because either if he doesn't have a rank and he's not, he's not an officer, then the question becomes, you know, you're at home someday.
Right, right.
Is, you know, the captain authorized to tell the Harbor Master what to do? I don't know. I mean, maybe that's not a polit-
Or a patrolman.
But-
Where are you referring to? I'm sorry.
So this is second paragraph of 148-3, first sentence, day-to-day oversight and supervision of the Barrington Police Department and the Barrington Chief of Police.
Yeah. You want to strike Police Department? Yeah, I, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
I'll leave it to your judgment, but it just struck me that it wasn't clear who has rank over the Harbor Master.
I agree.
Maybe you don't know because you've never gone on vacation, but when you go on vacation, do you appoint, do you appoint an acting chief?
If I'm out of state and I can't respond, yes.
Okay.
And if he's not, we just call him on a cell phone.
They call anyway.
I have another recommendation for change, and that's on that same paragraph, the last line. But instead, "The Harbor Master shall be considered an independent contractor with the town." So I'd like to strike Ann Harbor Patrol because they're not, they're part-time employees.
Okay.
Only the Harbor Master would be, is the independent contractor, assuming we had one at the moment.
So, any other questions or concerns? Do I hear a motion to adopt 2019-10, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 148 Public Waters, Harbor Master as amended, which is deleting the words, "and police department," deleting the words-
So moved.
Barrington Police Department and the, and deleting the words, Harbor, and Harbor Patrol.
And insert an "and" between considered and independent? Make contractors contractor, take yes off.
Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item is an ordinance amendment to Chapter 63, Article 3, Liquor License Rules and Regulations. And this is, I'm opening the public hearing on this. Is there anyone here who wanted to be heard on this? No. Seeing no one, I'm closing the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adopt 2019-12, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 63, Article 3, Liquor License Rules as presented. Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is an amendment to Chapter 67, Animals. This is 2019-14. I'm opening the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to be heard? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Does anyone have any questions about this?
I'll make a motion to adopt 2019-14, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 67, Animals as presented. Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next one is 2019-15, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 63, Article 5, BYOB establishments. Opening the public hearing. This is the one we've been looking at for some time, essentially making the, those people who would want to serve liquor, subject to the same rules as those who have a liquor license, including the training and so forth.
I, I have asked a question about that, whether there is an application that those people have to fill out, and if that application is available.
Mary is working with this solicitor to have an application created that fulfills the requirements.
Will that be ready?
But there is not one available right now.
Okay. Will that be ready by the time someone shows up?
It shouldn't take long.
We have some.
Okay.
I'm sure they have one in the, in the can from another town that we can utilize or something similar.
Okay.
What, what's the fee for the limited liquor license, the beer and wine? I forgot.
Mary?
What's the fee for-
For, for the limited liquor license?
BVL.
I want to say, because I don't have it in front of me, to think this out. So it's $2,000.
I think it's $1,000, isn't it?
I think it's $1,000, yeah.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adopt 2019-15, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 63, Article 5, BYOB establishments as presented?
So moved. Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one is article, this is 2019-16, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 45, Salaries and Compensation. This is the one we do every year to bring the salaries in line. We introduced this at the meeting just before the FTM. I'm opening the public hearing. Seeing no one interested in commenting, I'm closing the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adopt 2019-16, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 45, Salaries and Compensation as presented. Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item is a public hearing on the application for a BVL license for the eat-food group doing business as Black Pear, 312 County Road, Barrington, Rhode Island. I'm opening the public hearing. Does anyone want to be heard on that? You've been here all night.
I don't know if I need to be heard. I'm here. I'm a representative of the Black Pear, Ryan Resendis. So we put the application in. I've never actually gone through this process, so here I am, so have, do with me what you will. Okay?
So you don't have any, anything else to add, though? So I'm having, this is a public hearing.
Yeah. I mean, you know, so I'm the general manager at the East Bay Oyster Bar. I work on some of the backend finances and things like that for the Black Pear. You know, we've got a track record next door at the, at the Oyster Bar, responsible beverage servers. We've gone through all the trainings and, and things like that. And the Black Pear, which is a much smaller scaled business in terms of volume, we're operating, you know, somewhere between 35 and 40% of volume that the Oyster Bar does. And I think, I don't know how much that'll change. I mean, I don't think it'll ever catch up. It's just the, the way the business is structured, right? It's more daytime and things like that. But the liquor license does provide a different atmosphere, a different opportunity for the consumer as well. Right now, I'm just sort of, stop me anytime you want, but like the town, I'm not sure has much of a brunch opportunity. It doesn't have some of that stuff. So Black Pear, as a result, you know, we don't do as well as we potentially could because we don't have that attraction of what people generally would like to do on a Saturday or Sunday, Friday, whatever the day may be, right? Or just having, having a beer with lunch or a wine with something in the afternoon. Whatever the case may be, it's just another option for us to, to provide to the consumer. So that's my piece.
Okay. Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to grant a BVL license to Eat Food Group Incorporated, DBA Black Pear, 312 County Road, Barrington, Rhode Island, 02806. Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item is to set the agenda for our July 29 hearing. We've already mentioned something.
Poly styrene.
Poly styrene, introducing poly styrene ordinance change to that. Anything else?
Yeah. I was thinking with Lot 3A on George Street, we should probably gather some folks around a table at some point. I don't know if we need to officially appoint a committee to do this, or rather just get their input, but about uses, because that affects grant funding, and the grant windows open up probably around September, October, I think, for some of these programs, so.
Steve, is your mic on? I can't, can't hear you.
I'm sorry? Oh, sorry. I'm talking this way. I didn't have it in front of me. So I think if we gather a group of people together, we might have some insights. I don't know that we need to appoint a committee to talk about the use of Lot 3A, because that's going to affect what grants we apply for.
There has been, the Friends of Hockam Hill and, Nocham Hill, excuse me, and as well as the Barrington Land Conservation Trust have asked that we have some kind of a workshop or some kind of a, a meeting where we can discuss the options. Obviously, we got to look at what options are available. We talked about land swaps. We talked about farming. We talked about open space. So there's a lot, and a lot of it's going to depend on what grants are available. So I think at some point when, when Phil has, oh, he left already, but I'll make sure he knows, he knows about it already, but once he collects that data and we know what our options are, then bringing- then bringing everyone together to kind of having, you know, a discussion about what we should move forward with makes sense, but it's probably not going to be for a couple of months, I would guess.
Yeah, I think we should talk about in July, because we're not going to have another meeting in August. And the open space grants are going to open this fall. So at least that much, we want to know, are we talking open space or are we talking agricultural land? So if we can gather some people together, or at least put on the agenda who we need to gather together to have that discussion.
Right, discussion of the uses of Lot 3A and the, in light of the grants. And if there's anything else, obviously during the time.
I think the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, we want to talk about again.
We'll be on there.
And Barrington Land Conservation Trust, we're going to meet at 6:30. They just want to have a discussion and update the council as to what they're doing and some recommendations they may have moving forward.
Perhaps discuss and act on evaluation of the FTM, if that's going to be something we'll get, so that we can actually take an action on what to do.
And if there's anything else during the time, just let me know. Next item on the agenda is to move into executive session. Do I hear a motion to move into executive session in accordance with Rhode Island General Laws 42465A2, collective bargaining, DPW, and dispatch, and to discuss executive session minutes from May 6 for placement on the town council agenda on the July 29, 2019 agenda?
So moved.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're moving into executive session. Thank you.